All right, thank you, everybody. Sorry that we're starting a bit late this evening, but we can start with a roll call. Ms. Chow?
Here.
Ms. Tanya Budi?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Halper?
Here.
Ms. Cartha?
Here.
I move that the Board of Education approved tonight's meeting agenda with an amendment to have the equity work update prior to the approval of the racial educational equity policy. Second?
Second.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Halper?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Tanya Budi?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Thank you. Before we move into the presentations section, I do want to note that we have Spanish translation services available. If anybody would like that, if you let us know now, we can get you set up.
Let me translate in Spanish. So tenemos este servicios disponibles en español, si necesitan traducción en español sobre nuestra junta, aquí tenemos los servicios disponibles del señor alemán. Si quieren pedir esta traducción de nuestra junta, por favor pidan por el señor alemán. Gracias.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, we will start off with the presentation of the Phyllis Ganser Award.
Excuse my water bottle up here, but I have bronchitis and I may need it. My name is Sue Ganser Levinson, and I thank the board and community members for the opportunity to present the 2017 Phyllis Ganser Outstanding PTA Volunteer of the Year Award. This community has an incredible number of people who volunteer their time in many ways through many organizations. The Phyllis Ganser Award was created during the 1999-2000 school year to recognize Phyllis Ganser, an active and enthusiastic volunteer with PTA and PTA Council. Phyllis, the mother of three children in the Evanston-Skokie schools, had been diagnosed with breast cancer in December of 97. She had periods of remission during which she pursued her activities in the community, including being co-president of the Walker PTA. Unfortunately, the disease was metastatic, and she lost her battle with cancer in January of 2000. The PTA Council at that time did a really lovely thing by creating this award and presenting it to her as the first recipient. At the time of her death, her son David was a freshman at ETHS. He's now a computer consultant with the management -- excuse me, I didn't memorize this -- consulting firm in Portland, Oregon. Her daughter Jessie was in fifth grade at Walker School at the time of Phyllis's death, and her son Adam was in first grade at Walker. Jessie will be attending graduate school at the University of Michigan this fall in social work, and she is the recipient of an integrated health scholarship for her program. Adam, a 2015 graduate of Hamilton College in New York State, is employed as a software developer by Epic in Madison, Wisconsin. The fact that these kids are all doing so well now, I think in some ways can be attributed to the District 65 community. They had tremendous struggles along the way. Phyllis's death was stunning to many of us. I'm one of her older sisters, and my children are close in age. She and I spent uncountable hours together, many of them in PTA-related activities, particularly PTA Council. As a resident of the Skokie constituency that makes up parts of District 65 and 202, Phyllis was always adamant that the PTA Council be known as the Evanston-Skokie Council of PTAs. Over the years, ETHS has unfortunately, I think, disbanded its PTSA, so we no longer consider nominees from the high school. We consider only the District 65 schools. It's my honor and privilege to be part of the committee that solicits nominations for the award, reads the wonderful recommendations for always more than worthy nominees, and to participate in the very hard selection of one or occasionally two award recipients. I'd like to introduce my fellow committee members: Donna Lee Thauger, Marion Barnett, and her daughter, Katie Hart -- actually, her daughter's not on the -- Katie Hart, Pardon Siegfried, and Laura Vogel. We have two members who aren't here tonight: Laura Antlin and Deborah Wood. There are four criteria for the nominees: to be a member in good standing of the PTA; to be committed to the PTA goal of promoting the welfare of all schoolchildren; to have a spirit and enthusiasm for volunteer work; and to have a demonstrated ability to engage and involve other volunteers. Because all the nominees are so exceptional, I'd like to recognize each one by name, and if you're here, would you please stand? If you have an agenda, you'll see that each nominee appears here, and I believe this is going on the permanent record, too. Sophie Carlyle from Dawes. Elaine Derrer from Vessie Rhodes. Ben Long from Willard and Haven. Julie Ford from King Arts and ETHS. And I think it's Health from Willard and Haven. Are you here, Phil? Karin Kaiser from Willard. May Nelly from King Arts. Jill Miller from Walker &amp; Chute. Bridget Nelson from Kingsley and J.E. Which is the preschool here. Is that right? Bridget actually received two separate nominations. Heath Robinson from Walker &amp; Chute. Heather Sweeney from Washington and Nichols. Joyce Van Overmieren from Willard and Haven. This year, it seems like an impossible choice. This year was no exception. In fact, it was a fantastic group from which we had to select. This year's Phyllis Ganser Outstanding PTA Volunteer of the Year Award is going to two I know we want to get some pictures, but I want to say a few words about each of our winners this year. Liz is a parent at Dewey and Nichols. This was at least the second year Liz was nominated for the award. I didn't go back to check, but I know she was nominated last year. One of her nominators says, "Liz is always present. She is present in the way she mindfully interacts with kids and families, but she is also always present at school, doing whatever is needed, loading in mulch on a Saturday, advising the PTA team on fundraising, talking to kids in the edible garden, or helping Mr. Kegati [spelled phonetically], sorry if I butchered that, with a project that he knows she will handle with poise and grace." While she's held numerous positions -- and this, by the way, was a multiple-page nomination, but that's all I'm quoting -- while she's held numerous positions, that quote seems to summarize her approach, and in my opinion, is extremely high praise. Margaret McKay is a Lincolnwood parent. She is said to have a unique ability to build community for all families. Margaret has done her best to make sure all families feel they are welcome, valued, cherished members of the community. One truly heartwarming story, and I hope I'm not spilling any beans here, is that in an email to parents encouraging families to attend a potluck, she relayed how potlucks are about community, about sitting down at a shared table, getting to know each other, and recognizing each other. She talked about personal experiences from her past, and how that kind of recognition leads to community building and relationship building in a really positive way. Margaret is described as, quote, "a shining example of an engaged and passionate District 65 parent volunteer." The awardees have decided to leave the front of the room. I just want to say that their names have been engraved on this plaque, which is outside in the hallway, and has all of the winners since the beginning of time. Since 2000, the first year of the award. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, and congratulations to our two award recipients, and thank you very much for all of your service to both of your school communities and our district. Next, we will move on to our Northwestern Partnerships presentation.
And as we start to set up, let me kick this off with a few comments on behalf of the board and the entire district. I've been on assignment here as superintendent for three years, and from day one, our partners and neighbors at Northwestern University have been nothing but fantastic neighbors and partners. We've worked hand in glove together, starting at the president's office with President Shapiro and in the executive vice president's office with Nim Chanai, who's with us tonight along with Allen Anderson, and throughout the broad campus that makes up Northwestern University. The purple flag really does fly here at District 65. And just without trying to steal your thunder, Allen, again, the direct contact and support that we have from the program called Science and Society. Michael Kennedy is with us tonight, and Jen Lewin, who is our partner on assignment here in the District 65 partnership office, is so fantastic. Our colleagues and friends at the Institute for Policy Research, that has been headed by David Figlio, have helped to build analytic horsepower here in the district and have helped, along with us and our friends at District 202, to raise a million dollars of grant monies, and it's been really fantastic. The professors and the colleagues and students at the School for Education and Social Policy have reached out across town. The engineering department, Karen Smilowicz, Dr. Karen Smilowicz, has worked pro bono on our work on transportation for the last several years. And indeed, as I said, we have a STEM office here, and the direct support that the campus -- everybody in the campus has given to our Evan STEM initiative has been marvelous. So we welcome you here as partners. We thank you so much for everything you do, and we indeed can say, "Go Cats."
I feel like I'm, like, spot. So, um, can you be my -- everyone, my name is Allen Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood and Community Relations. I'm also in the neighborhood. I particularly like --
I was gonna say, I know.
Before I got yelled or talked, is this better? Okay. I wish I could do both, but I'll stay here for now. My name is Allen Anderson. I'm the Executive Director for Neighborhood and Community Relations at Northwestern University. And I'd just like to thank Dr. Goran and Chair Suni Cartha, and the rest of the board and the rest of the staff for the opportunity to speak this evening. We're really proud of the partnership. I think in a lot of ways, you did the heavy lift of my portion, so it'll make it a little easier for me when I get to my part. But I just really wanted to say thank you, thank you on behalf of Northwestern University. Your partnership and commitment has meant a lot to me personally. As an aside, you know, my principal sitting right next to me at Dewey, my teacher is sitting right here in Miss Cleveland. So it's awesome to see as a family member here in Evanston, the commitment we have personally and professionally. So I just want to say I appreciate that opportunity. For today's presentation, we're going to do a little bit of kind of framing of the university commitment, and I'll allow Nim Chanai to talk a little bit about that, and then I'll talk more specifically around some of the work that we're doing in terms of STEM education partnerships and the overall kind of work directly with District 65. So with that, I'll pass it to my colleague Nim Chanai.
So thank you very much for having us here. On behalf of Morty Shapiro, President, I bring you greetings from Northwestern. It's always good to be here, and it's always good to be invited into a program rather than be summoned, because usually that's what happens to Allen and me when we get called into rooms. So it's great to be here. So what I want to do is very quickly affirm the commitment to be in partnership with you, but I want to do that in the context of what we are attempting to do at Northwestern in terms of all of our neighborhood and community relations strategy. As you know, Morty Shapiro became the president now eight years ago, and from his very first moments in Evanston, he was -- he really set about to change the narrative of the relationship between the university and its surrounding community. He realized that every great anchor institution and the community in which it's located have kind of a varied history of good times and bad times, but he was really determined that this would be a time that would renew this sense of partnership, of coming together, and really thinking of us as one, not as two separate entities who were constantly responding to requests and criticisms, but really setting a path in how we might move forward. And really underlying that was the fundamental commitment that we are inextricably linked. There is no way Northwestern's going to be a great university without a thriving community in which it's located, and at the end of the day, Evanston and its surrounding communities are not going to be strong unless Northwestern thrives. So understanding that, Morty has been very singularly committed and determined that he would be the kind of leader that would really bring the relationship forward. So when Allen and I got here a few years ago, it was very much that commitment that drew us in terms of how we might work together. One of the first things we found is that while we had really a strong commitment to be in partnership, it wasn't always clear to the world how we engaged each other. So we tended to be a little bit more transactional. A request would come in, we would respond to it, and it was very hard for people, particularly outside the university, to think about how exactly do we connect with the university. So we went about a process of shaping a framework for this engagement, and as you will see, obviously, the very first one is what's relevant here. But I want to spend a little bit of time talking about that framework. The very first one is education, child, and youth development. If we don't do that as a great university, we really fail in our fundamental task. And so that was something that was particularly important to Morty. So as he will say, his first year here, if you looked at admissions from CPS and ETHS, there was a total of about 16. Today, that number is 144. So that shows the commitment to be present for our young people. The other pillar is around economic and community development, and then third is health and public safety. So Allen's really going to come up and talk to you a little bit about particularly drilling into education, child, and youth development, how we think about the partnership and the engagement with District 65. We obviously have a similar and a strong relationship with Evanston Township High School, but today, we really want to focus on District 65. Once Allen does that, I'll come back and talk about the other two pillars, and then we'll take questions from the group.
Thank you, Nim. So when we started, I think there's a really critical thing that needs to be stated, which was the importance of working together and being strategic around the work of District 65 and how the university can be a strong partner. So we met with Dr. Goran and staff, and really tried to flesh out a lot of the different areas that were of intense need, and Dr. Goran said very clearly, "STEM is a priority. We want to make sure that we have a thoughtful partnership. We want to work together around addressing areas of STEM." And so part of that was identifying great leadership, and so we were able to work with Mike Kennedy and identifying Jen Lewin, who's a great partner on the ground, and she started in September, or late August officially, but has been with us this whole school year and has really been building some really great work on the ground, and I'll speak to that in a moment. But then beyond that, it was also about figuring out what were some of the priority areas we really wanted to focus on. So, you know, strengthening the practice, and we'll talk a little bit about some of the work that's done there. The collaborative research, I know, Dr. Goran, you just spoke to that. Some of the community engagements, so how do we bring in more parties in terms of partnership and collaboration? And then the also the importance of underpinning the equity inclusion, even related to STEM. So how do we think about how we bring more people to the table, creating equitable access to quality education and opportunity? So in the first one, and this is a picture of Jen, and she's doing her work in science. I think it's just interesting to just talk about the importance of strengthening practice. And first, you know, I talked about leadership matters, and Jen has been a really strong partner. She comes with a number of years of science background, working in Chicago Public Schools. She also brings a lot of expertise around standards in relation to science, and so she's been an awesome partner to the school district. I know she's kind of been on the ground, getting to know folks, really trying to build relationships, and that's really critical, because in order for us to really move the needle, we have to have trust and buy-in from every person in every school, and Jen's really been working really hard to do that, so I just want to acknowledge her for that. We've also made some additional leadership changes. You know, we have an incoming dean from our School of Education and Social Policy, David Figlio, which was mentioned previously. And then we also have a new head for our Office of STEM Education Partnerships, Nicole Pinker, who just was identified recently, and she'll start in the fall. So we have a lot of new resources and leaders who are kind of coming to the table, who are anxious to work very closely with District 65 to really move the needle. So one of the things around strengthening practice, which I think is really critical, so we have the next-generation science standards, and so even as we approach this summer, Jen is going to be leading some trainings in particular with some teachers, including this teacher, Miss Cleveland, right behind, and then working on really preparing faculty for these standards and understanding how do they ultimately learn the materials and then ultimately apply it, not only in their own schools, but to actually roll this effort out district-wide. Obviously, we've done a lot of other things in terms of just strengthening practice. You know, we're working obviously with Evan STEM, which is a really great initiative, both in school and out of school, to really help support a lot of the work that's happening on the ground. I want to go to this next slide, which is really about the collaborative research and data infrastructure. So we talked about Dr. Figlio, but it's really about bringing experts to the table to help identify and understand whether or not certain practices or programs or ideas are really making an impact. And so bringing that research expertise is critical from a research perspective, from a programmatic evaluation perspective, because we really want to make sure we're informing the district as best as we can around whether or not we are moving the needle based on certain initiatives. So it's really critical to do that, and we've been able to build that with bringing data researchers, grants from Lewis Sebring family and Spencer Foundation, as well as, you know, working really closely with staff and leadership at the district to ultimately identify talent that we'll have on the ground working at District 65. So we're really excited about that, and we'll continue to build in that regard. In terms of community engagement, you know, this is really about bringing the partnerships. So I talked about Evan STEM, which is a collaborative effort from a number of partners, whether it's Family Focus, YOU, ETHS, Metamedia, and Northwestern. So there are groups that are kind of coming together to really focus on STEM and STEM education in this community. That's obviously a very critical ecosystem, and so the learning that happens across that ecosystem is really critical to helping District 65 as we continue to work in partnership around STEM. Obviously, you know, Mike Kennedy and the great work of the Science and Society, we're able to now move and create a science club here in Evanston in Family Focus, and that's an amazing move, and that's, again, creating more opportunities both in school and out of school for kids to be able to learn and access high-quality STEM education. The last thing I will just say, just related to equity and inclusion, in terms of the fourth priority, so part of it is also just creating opportunities where there may not have been. So this particular slide, the picture on this is actually at Dewey Elementary in relation to Books and Breakfast Program. And while that particular program is just one example of a partnership between the school district, which Northwestern plays a pretty integral role in terms of tutors who ultimately come in each and every day, it's actually also creating meaningful opportunities for kids on the ground in terms of teaching math each and every day and providing a high-quality breakfast before the start of school. And while that may seem, you know, insignificant potentially, the preparation and having a quality meal before you start school is obviously very critical, and this is a really meaningful program that's really supporting a lot of kids in our community, particularly kids of color, who may not necessarily always have access to high-quality tutoring and support. So this is just one example. I would also say that the university's been very intentional in terms of equity inclusion overall, in terms of having Dr. Jabar Bennett work closely with the district around some of the equity initiatives and ultimately the pledge on your website in terms of equity itself, and having his input included in that. So then the last thing I'll say before passing it back to Nim is kind of how we move forward. We're going to continue to set priorities that ensure alignment. So we want to be mindful and thoughtful and in partnership with the district as we continue to think about ways in which we should partner. You're gonna -- we're always going to have our dedicated leadership on our side, who are ready and available to help support as needed. We're going to also leverage our expertise where possible, and we're going to do things in a way that builds trust, so that the collaboration can stay strong. We're going to always continue to encourage that of collaboration and innovation, and then finally, we got to make sure that in each and every opportunity, we can reflect on our work and make sure that it's really making the impact that we hope can happen in our district. So I'm going to pivot back to Nim, and he's going to talk a little bit about the other areas that we focus on within Neighborhood and Community Relations.
So the other pillar that we set was really around economic and community development. When we met with the mayor, Mayor Tisdale, one of the very first things that she talked about was really employment opportunities for young people. So we do two examples that I want to point out. One is through the Summer Youth Employment Program, we now have almost 30 young people from the Evanston community who work in the summer at various roles at the university. Many of them, in many ways, get informally adopted by the departments that they work in, who then stay with them, particularly if they go away to college, and so that they have an opportunity to really be exposed to the university. This one is one that we are particularly proud of. We, three years ago, we made a commitment that every year Northwestern would bring in six young people from the Evanston community. So if you think about it, the skilled trades program, it really is dying off as sons and daughters are not following in their parents' footsteps. So what we've done is we bring in six young people who are vetted by the city. In partnership, we select them, and we take them in on a one-year commitment into full union-paid jobs where they work alongside people who then train them. So our first cohort of six young men graduated from the program. Four of them were hired at Northwestern, and then we worked with the other two to place them elsewhere. So we've got 100% placement rate, which is great, and then they're all doing incredibly well. The second cohort is approaching graduation in a few months, and we're in the process of selecting the third cohort. So this alone is about a $400,000 commitment a year that the university is making. And the beauty of this program is And the beauty of this program is it has received a lot of attention, both locally. So North Shore Hospital is taking a look at this program, and the question really that the mayor posed to them is why aren't you doing something like this? And also in the city of Chicago, we've met with Mayor Rahm Emanuel and Andrea Zopp to think about how they might be able to port this program to particular communities in the Chicagoland area. The other one is around health and public safety. We do a lot of things in community in partnership with the city. We are working with the police department, the fire department, and our own police department to really train members of the community to provide emergency services in the event of a disaster, and they are trained in all kinds of things, including how to use AED equipment and things like that. So again, just to give you a little bit of a glimpse of the ways in which we are in partnership. But I think the most important thing I'd say is we understand that this is not a destination, it's a journey. And so the commitment that the university has made is that we will be intentional about this journey and that we will be constant, consistent, present, and transparent. So these are an easy set of words to say, but it's ones that we intend to live. So Alan and I, by all means, hold us to that commitment and challenge us, because we may not always get everything right, but we can stand up and take responsibility for the things that don't go well, but also make a commitment to listen, to learn, and to really be in partnership. So the mistake that often gets made by large research universities and institutions is this concept of what can we do for the community? But there is a lot that we feel we can learn from the community to be in partnership, so that we view this very much as what can we do together? Because there really is benefit in bringing together the ideas, the human talent, and the capital together to address the most pressing problems. And again, if Morty were here, he would say, if we don't address the issues that face our young people, what can possibly be more important or more noble? So I will stop there and happy to take your questions or comments.
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
So they go through the, you're talking about the Summer Youth Employment Program? Yeah, so we work through the city. So Kevin Brown in the city, mayor's office, he does the initial screening, and then we get the young men and women.
Yes, they're both high schools, so they're young adults, so they're basically more eighteen to fifteen. Yeah, Kevin Brown.
Yeah, Kevin Brown in the city. Yeah.
Thank you for that. Candace, did you have?
Oh, I just wanted to kind of also say thank you for helping us understand the broader scope of the partnerships, because I think this is the first opportunity the board has had to talk about the larger strategy around partnerships that the university has. And in particular, thank you for the support of the expansion of Books and Breakfast. I know that the scaling of that could have not have taken place from Dewey, where it would live for a long time, to then Lincolnwood and now Kingsley. And being a parent at Kingsley, I know they have 35 to 40 kids that are coming every morning, and I think it's going to have long and impactful results for us. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Well, thank you for that. And one of the things that we realized on our end is, we do a lot of things, and sometimes it's hard for people to connect to those things. So that's why the framework helps people see that the university is present in multiple ways, but it's also in kind of an intentional way. And the role that Alan and I really play is making sure we are connecting to people like Mike Kennedy, who really represent the human capital within the university. So in many ways, I describe ourselves as kind of the concierge service to make sure that the ideas, the needs of the community are then connected to the right homes. Because if everything just runs as kind of a community relations initiative, in a great university, it's never going to thrive. So we've got to make sure, if we're working on STEM education, we got to get our faculty involved, and we've got to get that connection. So that's really the role that people like Mike Kennedy play, is then there's someone who is charged at the senior leadership level by the provost and by me and Morty to make sure that they are driving, living it, and making sure it thrives.
Thank you.
There's a lot of, I mean, I've lived here for over 30 years, and there's always that back and forth between, the separation between city and university and different ways that it ebbs and flows in working together. And we talk a lot in our equity agenda about barriers that people have to different levels of institutions. And if these partnerships help break those barriers down as either a place of learning or a place of employment or both, or get families to be exposed to a part of our city that's right here, that they've never been to before, even one kid at a time, it's a really great opportunity for the entire community. So thank you.
No, so we agree with you completely. We know it's intimidating to come on a large campus, even to apply for a job. So one of the things we're doing right now is our HR department's getting ready to do community hiring, where they'll go to people because, so that, because it's hard to come on a great campus to figure out where to park, how to get to the Human Resource Office. So what we're doing is we're kind of bringing the university to you, to communities where we're working with the alderman to set up, whether it's in a place of worship, whether it's in a community center, where we'll take down some of those barriers. So we are trying to be more accessible to people in terms of meeting them where their needs exist. So thank you.
Just wanted to echo everybody's appreciation here on the board in regards to the work that you do in partnership with us. One of the first times I heard about Northwestern being involved in some of our schools is that presentation that the district gave around the Latino student achievement back, I think it was about a year ago, right? Izzy was here for that. And I know what was showcased were some of the best practices that are going on around the school district that address the needs of Latino students. And one of the things that I was really impressed about was some of the, there was a program, I think in Washington, that did science and did some STEM in Spanish with some of the Northwestern students who are in the chemistry and biology programs. I mean, I think that is incredible, because then you're getting these folks who are, again, and when we talk about equity work, you're always trying to look at folks who, it's that mirrors and, gosh, I'm sorry. Yeah, mirrors or windows, windows and mirrors. Thank you, Candace.
I learned it from you.
Yes, and I forgot, but thank you. So again, being able to learn about others, but also being able to reflect, be reflected in the settings. And again, I think that's an incredible program, something that I think can be scaled, depending on every school, and kind of just trying to find programs like that and entry points. So again, kudos to all of you who work with our kids, and we look forward to continuing to work with you guys.
Thank you also. Not to repeat what other people have said already, but I grew up in Wheeling, Illinois, and the first time I went to Northwestern was because I was lucky enough to participate in a summer school program through my school district, and we took a tour of the university. And I was blown away that the campus was so nearby my home, but I had never had a chance to go visit. I'm a graduate of Northwestern because of that interaction I had with the school when I was in fourth grade. So I'd urge you to also investigate maybe programs that are less programs and just more invitations to the community, to invite students into, maybe not the classroom necessarily, but just the campus, and let them bask in awe of what a great place it is.
So again, we're in complete agreement. So one of the things was really kind of taking down, again, as we were talking about the barriers. So if you haven't been on our lakefront path, you should be there. All the no trespassing signs are gone. It's open. No one's going to hassle you. So we want to reflect the fact that we are an open community. We want you there. And if you're there on a weekend, you will notice that it's not all just Northwestern people, right? So you'll see people with kids in strollers, bikes. So just at a very simple level, we've tried to emphasize that we're an open community. So I have a 12-year-old daughter who, because of my jobs, took her first steps on a university campus. So when Karen talks about going to college, she doesn't talk about if, she talks about when, because she's been around a university campus her whole life. So I completely understand the power of our children being exposed. So we do host a lot of programs where we bring young people on campus to meet with university leadership, to meet with students, to spend a day, they hear from the football coach, they hear from the president of the university. Because part of what we're also trying to tell them is we each have a journey in how we arrive to the places. So just because Maury Shapiro is the president of the 12th-ranked university in the world doesn't mean he just arrived as a president. So it's powerful for them to hear directly from the people on our campus, and particularly our students in terms of their own journeys to get there, because it really paints the art of the possible, where it's not an unreachable dream, but it's something that we can work together to make a reality. So again, we are in complete agreement, and so it's something that we are continuing to work on to make things. So one of the other things we do is every summer, we host an annual picnic that's open to the community. Last year, 1,500 people came on our campus, had food, and some people said to us, I've been in this community for 20 years, and this is the first time I've been on the Northwestern campus. So it's, again, we are going to continue to reach out, so we'll be hosting that picnic again in July, so watch for that invitation. So we're really trying to encourage people to come on our campus, experience it. Alan sends out a list, because the other impression that people have is that a lot of the events on campus are closed just for the university community, which is not true. So Alan now sends out on a monthly basis, here are all the events, so that people can come to a performance, they can come to the Block Museum. So there's a whole lot of activities that we're taking on pretty intentionally to open ourselves and welcome people to the community. But go check out that lakefront path if you haven't already done it.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. I really appreciate, as someone who's been engaged with community engagement, I really appreciate the, it may be small, but I think it's very large, the language that you're using, talking about partnership, talking about having equal value, not just giving, but also receiving. And so I deeply appreciate that this is not just an effort and partnership and name only. And also just the breadth, you know, there's very high-level conversations that are happening in terms of figuring out how to measure things in a longitudinal way. And then there's also very practical, on-the-ground touchpoints with individuals and families and these invitations to the campus. And so I just really appreciate the breadth of the impact as well as the intentionality of it. So thank you all.
Thank you. And really, I want to recognize Alan Anderson, who is kind of, he's a kid from the area. So when we brought him back to Northwestern, what really drew me, I mean, after meeting with Alan for five minutes, I realized we had the right person to do this job. Because when you have people for whom this work is personal, it goes a lot faster than for people whom it's just a job. So I really want to commend Alan for the incredible kind of heart he's brought to this role, and that's really reflected in the engagement that you see. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't think, I don't have any questions either, just more of the, added to the thank yous of, you know, this has been an incredible partnership. I think, having been a student at Northwestern and now having lived here for 15 years, I have definitely seen the changes that have been intentional, both from the city and from the university, and appreciate it deeply. And I'm excited to continue the partnership and continue to deepen that partnership.
And thank you very much for your leadership for our community as well. So thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much. Thank you. We will move on to public comments. Just go over quickly, members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. The Board of Education shall not permit the voicing of personal attacks against any district employee. Each individual is allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board. Please be sure to state your name when you come up. So we have Lakeisha Barton as our first speaker.
Good evening, board members and committee members. My name is Lakeisha Barton, and I'm here to representing as a longtime Pace representative for the Doorway to Learning Program. I value the Doorway to Learning Programs, the teacher, and the staff. It is important to me to close the achievement gap that has been happening for several years. The teachers in this program have paved the way for my two children to build positive relationships in a positive learning environment. Lately, I have noticed there is an extreme shortage of staff. This led me to ask several questions, because I was already concerned as to why great teachers have been quitting and stating to me that they do not pay enough. My son loves his teachers, and he looks forward to greeting them in the morning. When they leave, he asks about them and where they are. When the new teachers come in, it takes times for my child to get adjusted, because he really doesn't know them. In my few minutes of allotted time, I will tell you a story about my son Kyler, who started school around the age two. He had extreme difficulty adjusting to the classroom environment. Being around so many different people scared him and it stunted his learning growth. One of the teachers, Ms. Sarah, expressed to me the need to accept help from resources in order to support Kyler and his education. Kyler received speech and language through the program and later transferred to District 65 Head Start, where he is receiving those same services. It is to my understanding that the teachers of the Doorway to Learning are severely underpaid. The teachers who work for similar programs, even some of the lunchroom staff at District 65, are being paid a lot more than them. I spoke to the parent committee and asked if we could do some type of fundraiser to offer additional money to help save the teachers. Due to the grant, we are not allowed to. The current state grant that they submitted gave the teachers a 15% pay increase in salary, which would allow them a decent living wage. Why is it that they are not getting what is written in the grant? As a parent, I am furious. I supported the District 65 teachers and staff when they were going on strike, and as Evanston citizen, I voted yes to the referendum. I agreed to raise taxes to save our schools, thinking that the school my children go to are included in that. And now I am concerned that District 65 is not showing appreciation by doing the same for their sister programs. The family sitter's compensation is so far below the comparable level of compensation for similar employment inside and outside of District 65. Please do the right thing and give them the 15% increase they apply to, so working parents like me can send their kid to a school that supports them in educational enrichment and social learning through play. Please help these teachers. They have attended school, and they have the same education that the other teachers have, and they deserve better wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, next we have Prudence Moylan.
Oh.
Sorry, we have the sign-up sheet.
Oh.
Did you sign up?
Can I still sign up?
Yes. So here. All right. All right, Adila's going to come and get your name on it, and then while she's doing that, Prudence, if you want to.
Good evening. I'm Prudence Moylan. I live at 1113 Leslie in Evanston. I want to thank all of you, everyone in District 65, the racial and educational equity policy, which the trust will be approved. It's an important marker on the road to achieving equitable outcomes. I thank everyone, and I also want to thank OPAL, the Organization for Positive Action and Leadership, for bringing me into the equity discussion among community members and the school board. Tonight, my comment focuses on hiring and equity. The recognition of a diverse workforce as a key part of the equity policy is important. Equity and Hiring Practices report that I read also is a good start, but the stubborn historic pattern of white teachers at 75% of staff will require an urgent and innovative effort for change throughout the system. Not only do we have challenging work in Evanston and Skokie, we are competing for black teachers when the demand is much greater than the supply. In reviewing best practices and information from the internet, I found a fully-developed and aggressive hiring for diverse and aggressive hiring-for-diversity plan from 2005 for the Charter Schools of Illinois. We are a little late to the party. The plan does indicate that employee referrals are a top source for finding teachers, and I note the district has an ambassador program underway. How well are we doing in creating a wide network of contacts and university partnerships to identify top candidates early? To recruit young teachers, apparently, we need social media and a website presence that is lively, accurate, and consistently updated. A 2014 report published in Education Weekly identified similar approaches. Most importantly, once we have interested prospective teachers, we need to have an equitable and efficient process of selection, interviewing, so that we can make good decisions quickly. I do notice that that focuses in the plan for internal development of that process. But, anecdotally, I report that a friend of mine applied for a staff position in 2017. She never received any response, even after three phone calls. She has a job at a university in our network of university partnerships, so District 65 did not make a good impression on her in this case. Finally, I read Larry Gavin's report in the Roundtable on May 18th on Sean Reardon's presentation at ETAHS, and it is painful to realize that the preschool was not included in this equity study and analysis. His report indicates that the opportunity gap is already in place by third grade. Tonight's report on the work of the last two years is hopeful, but we need to work with Cradle to Career and other partners to speed up the pace of equitable change for our youngest residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much. Joseph Brownlee.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Gorham. Name's Joe Brownlee. I am a parent of two at Walker Elementary, and my wife and I have enjoyed our time. We actually have a son in high school who's an alum, so we love Walker and the district. But I do understand you have a consent agenda about some assignments or appointments of assumed principals, and I was honored to be one of the parents on the advisory committee for the Walker principal search, and along with other faculty. I just wanted to raise a couple of questions and concerns that maybe, hopefully, you've had in discussion during your deliberations as to what these appointments really mean to the community. I have 10-plus years or 20-plus years of experience in making these significant hires, and I know Dr. Gorham and his team are in a very challenging position to satisfy all key stakeholders in the community. So, I recognize he gets paid the big bucks to make these big decisions, but I do want to raise to the board's understanding that there were some concern from the parents that were engaged in this process, that it was sort of a fait accompli. We recognize that we were engaged in this process to help provide some feedback to the administration, but we were a bit concerned that it felt like the decision was already made. And so, we wanted to express our concerns, and I know I've tried, I've reached out to a couple of people and tried to express our concerns, that our parents were very committed to this process, the teachers were very committed, but there was a lot of frustration that some of the promises weren't delivered. So, we just wanted to make sure that Dr. Gorham and the team understand in the future, if this is a fait accompli, you're hired to do this, you make the decisions, but your outreach to the parent community and the teacher community is perceived as a fait accompli, it's challenging to find people who want to engage in that discussion in the future. So, I'm hoping and praying that the board and the administrations made the decision that the parents and the teachers made, saw in the committee, because we felt there were some gaps in the process. And so, we'd like for you to consider reframing it next time you have to hire a principal, or consider even if there's a need for that outreach, because based on my discussion with many parents in the community, it's not being perceived very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Suzanne Sheridan.
I have this letter, and I just missed on my eyes, and I'm supporting the Zero to Five Family Center programs, and that letter has more detail, so it's on my mind. Thank you. My name's Suzanne Sheridan, and I have a seven-year-old daughter, Wira Sheridan, and she's a student at Dewey Elementary in the TWEE program. And I'm here to encourage you to support the Zero to Five Family Center programs. My letter goes into more detail. Wira and I started participating in these programs when she was nine months old. I found this flyer at the public library about Discipline with Love. It was a point in my life when I was pretty overwhelmed. I'm a single parent, and I was in a precarious living situation at that time. I was just emotionally pretty, just bowled over. And just, my daughter and I started coming to the family center for the programs, and not too long into our time here, we got a parent educator, Ms. Candace Austin, and Ms. Candace is a friend of ours to this day. She definitely goes above and beyond the call of duty, and I'm grateful for her, and all the family educators do this, not just Candace. These are people that are very dedicated to helping their, these families, all families, and, you know, the program serves low-income families, find support and help. And while it's not really emphasized, these sorts of things, age zero to three, that's when parents bond with their child. And also, stability in the life of a child at that time is very important. Ms. Austin helped me to find a lot of resources in this community and to get support, and also, she gave me, empowered me in a lot of ways. At the time, I wasn't very much believing in myself, and, you know, really, you have to be able to advocate for yourself and for your children in the system. And both Ms. Austin and Ana Hernandez, who was our parent educator from ages three to five in the Breakfast Club program, she really helped me to know how to advocate and sort of, you know, just to navigate the education system here in District 65. And I don't hesitate to this day to talk with teachers or the social worker at the school, or Mr. Kelgotti, who is here. I haven't talked to you much, but I have thought of things like, oh, okay, I should ask Mr. Kelgotti about this, things, programs at the school, and the PTA. And, you know, I don't think that I would have really found that community or, you know, had the support, had it not been for that program. You know, all of these parent educators hold a special place in my family's heart, in my daughter's heart. I definitely think that these programs are important. You know, I know since the time that we were in the program, that the three-to-five program is no longer. I find that sad. You know, I really think that these are programs that not only low-income families, but all families could really use, because it really, it's a supportive thing. It helps you to get, to get the most out of the education system, because parents and educators are partners. And so, I really found that I, you know, know how to do that now, better because of this program. My daughter, you know, I want her to have a happy and successful life and to get the best education possible, and that comes from me being involved. And I also, if I have problems, I still know that I can ask all the educators here. We're still friends with them. I still, you know, would not hesitate to ask them, like Angela, I don't know her last name, but she's the head of the program, if I was wondering something about the school district. Angela, what do you think? You know, I would ask her, Ms. Austin, ask her, Candace Austin. I just want you to know that these are really important programs, and I hope that you continue to fund them and expand them and to notice and recognize the important jobs that these educators do. They really do help people to find resources and help to have a better life. Our life is very stable now, and I'm very grateful, you know, for the resources that we found through, with our parent educators and in the community at large. It's made a significant difference in our life, and I'm very grateful for that. And please keep that in mind as you're making funding decisions and you're considering, you know, how you're going to expand programs. These things really matter to families. And, you know, I'm still friends with families that are here that aren't speaking, and I know that they would say the same. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I thought I wanted to say something about the program as well. I told her she could speak. Go ahead. This is Wira Sheridan. What do you want to say about the program? And the family center?
Go ahead. We're really interested to hear what you have to say. Go ahead. Don't be scared.
Kids need to have fun.
Thank you, both of you. I apologize if I am going to mispronounce the next name. There's not a last name to it. Itatu.
Hi, my name is Itatu, and I am sorry, I'm not prepared for, to say many, many things, but I would like to say about Ms. Candace. And she is a part of me, like, we moved here from Chicago five years ago, when my daughter was ten months old, and we came to the family center, and I found Ms. Candace. And she's been with me for so many things, and, like, she introduced me for so many programs, and she was in Setana's family, this is Setana, and for many, many things. And I'm so glad to find the family center and the program and Ms. Candace. And, I don't know, now, like, I'm shaking. So, it's so hard to say about the family center and Ms. Candace. She is a sister, a family, a friend to me, and I am so happy to have that program and to have in our life. So, please, and I can't say anything, it's hard for me, but please consider it, just like what Suzanne said. She's my friend too. She's, and Wira, her daughter, she's her friend through the family center, through Ms. Candace. I get to meet a wonderful person, a wonderful friend. Please consider it. That's the only thing I can say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Gorham, President Cartha, board members and administrators. I'm going to present my comments tonight in the form of an essay. And the name of the essay is entitled, "Write Your Own Narrative." I was reminded of the importance in writing your own story last night at Ebenezer Church at their Men's Day celebration. The speaker's topic was, "Don't Let Anyone Write Your Story. Write Your Own Story." Of course, his remarks were biblically based, from the Garden of Eden to Moses. His journey took us on the Blue Nile through Kush and the White Nile through Ethiopia, which merged into the Nile and flowed north into the Mediterranean. The speaker interjected Kushites, using biblical verses throughout his text. There was a Kushite with Moses. When the Kushite told Moses he was going home, Moses implored him to stay with them because he, the Kushite, not only knew which way to go, but which way not to go. The speaker said, "Don't let anyone tell you that Africans didn't know Christianity until they became slaves here in America." He said, "We were in the Garden of Eden," and he proved it by quoting various books in the Bible and reminding us that wherever we see the word Kush in the Bible, we are to remember it means black. I'll tie this all together soon. Many years ago, a group of African-American parents, teachers, community leaders, dissatisfied with test scores of District 65 African-American students, came together to begin a quest to secure an educational program for our kids that was written by us, for us. Countless hours were spent in researching the most innovative curriculums at that time. After nearly 18 months, this group chose an African-centered curriculum as the most effective method to reach our kids, a curriculum in which they could see themselves, build self-esteem, as well as increase their knowledge of their history. The best educators were sought to offer their counsel in designing the program, including Dr. Asa Hilliard. Committee's work has been praised in recent years by the amount of research that went into developing this program. After heavy resistance, the then-board authorized a program that at best was meant to quiet the instigators. We were accused of wanting to resegregate the schools, set the district back how many years. All we wanted was the same education our kids, for our kids that the white community had for its children. One of those board members even wrote a paper entitled, "What Happened to Brown," referring to Brown versus the Board of Education. One of the foundations of the program is keeping the students in close proximity, the village concept. The kindergarten wing at Oakton School has been ideal for housing K-3 classes. However, since the establishment of the ACC, there has been an effort, almost yearly, to relocate the ACC program, to break it up. Now, back to the subject of my piece. When it comes to educating our African-American children, we know which way to go. Let's not go back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Silverman. I live at 1927 Cleveland in Evanston, and I came here tonight because I was volunteering at the baby room at the family center today, and there was, I often asked about staffing and had a lot of questions about it, and so, some of the parents, there was mention that there was going to be some discussion tonight. So, I thought this would be a good time for me to share some of my thoughts. I'm an early childhood professional. I've been teaching and directing in this community since 1985, started out at the Magaw YMCA supervising their infant toddler program. And I've taught and directed private early childhood program here in Evanston for 20 years. I retired two years ago, and I really had the hope of devoting more time to really my interest in supporting the district's work, especially in closing the gap. I was at that meeting with Terri. I've been at many meetings over the last 25 years, and always interested in improving the educational experiences for the zero-to-five kids in Evanston. I've been part of many initiatives and gatherings and meetings. I've attended many countless board meetings, really, I think, to offer support, to bear witness, and to maintain, try to help in some way to maintain the vision and the values of District 65. So, in the meantime, I started to look for ways, after I retired, that I could maybe learn more about the district, use my experience to contribute, and I did decide to volunteer at the family center. And I've been doing that during this past year. Just last week, I read a report in the newspaper, that, a report that was presented at the high school, that again, lists all the reasons why minority children are lagging behind. And one of the repeating issues is the difficulty in getting quality childcare. So, the statistics show us over and over that this can make a difference, and you know this, you've talked about it at many of your meetings. It can make a difference, and we know that. And the article mentions, though, the difficulties, and they're the difficulties of quality childcare. And it specifically mentions the issue of low wages for childcare teachers, inconsistent care, high employment turnover. Quality care cannot really exist when there's not enough quality staff. The district's Zero to Five program is staffed, from my experience... The district's zero-to-five program is staffed, from my experience, with the most caring, concerned professionals. It's been wonderful working there and volunteering there, but there's not enough staff. Your employment site always has a job opening for that job. It's been there all year, when I look at job interests for myself, and that job is not filled. And it's not surprising, because the range of the position is about $27,000 a year. The discrepancy between the salary for those teachers and the other teachers of young children in our district is just too large. You haven't been able to fill these positions, and no matter how well-meaning the current staff is, there are just not enough teachers to give the children what they need. Not to have good enough childcare, that's not our mission in Evanston. I know that from listening to you all. But to meet the mission of quality care. The facility, the supervision, the vision, the hopes, the dreams of the teachers and the families are very high, but there have to be enough teachers. And every, every study has shown that teachers must be paid appropriately. The board knows this. They know this based on salaries for all the other teachers. The test scores still tell a sad story, and I would say that the family center is willing, but the salaries are weak. I know that's a little trite expression, but again, I think you have to put your money where your mouth is. Another trite expression, put your money where the children are, where the babies are, where the families are, and where the teachers are. Because this money is going to provide the quality and quantity of teachers, and they will provide those 30, well, some of the millions of words of the 30 million-word gap. They'll provide the consistent and responsive care. They'll provide the individualized attention that you know is needed, the creative and appropriate curriculums, and everything that it takes. So, I just say, this is our city, our district program. These are our babies. They're our families. And we have to stand completely committed to the goals and mission that this district has really come out to stand for. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Roger Williams.
I'm from Skevinston. I'm the reigning president of Opal. A few weeks ago, Sean, Dr. Sean Reardon, did a presentation called "Income, Race, Gender, and Educational Opportunity." And there was a lot of quotes in there that kind of really, really relate to us. And I picked up some of them. He says, "A lot of inequality is being produced prior to the third grade." Another one says, "Much other action produces economic, opportunity occurs prior to third grade." And finally, Evanston does a great job with students who are not poor. Now, where does the achievement gap actually start in Evanston schools? I believe it starts in preschool, and so does Dr. Reardon. Here are a couple of excerpts I pulled out of our achievement report back in 2016. Only 34% of Black students enter District 65 with a level of early literacy skills considered kindergarten-ready. Contrast that with 64% of white students enter District 65, that meaning kindergarten, with the levels of early literacy skills considered kindergarten-ready. So, we're talking about, this is where the gap starts. 34% for the Black students who entered District 65, contrasted with 64% of the white students who entered District 65. Almost all, 96% of Black students who have had pre-K experience, but Black students are less likely to attend private preschool and more likely to attend a preschool such as JEH. 51% of Black students attend JEH preschool or Head Start. 68% of white students attend private preschool. So, you're starting to see a pattern here? What Dr. Reardon was talking about starts, the achievement gap starts actually in preschool, actually, prior to third grade. So, the question I want to pose for District 65, because JEH is in District 65, is the last time I checked. When is District 65 going to take responsibility for and develop programs that elevate the academic outcomes from JEH preschool up to the standards of the private preschools? Right now, you initiate and are ensuring the continuation of the achievement gap. Just think about it.
My name is Alice Berry. I live at 1630 Main in Evanston. I'm a small business owner and an Opal volunteer. Thank you for taking public comment. I'm grateful to have this equity report. Great job, Cory. And I'm delighted to see that more than 500 adults and 1,000 children were involved in the equity walk process. I urge District 65 to begin taking action to implement this report's recommendations without delay, with deadlines that put these changes on a fast track. I believe the parents of Black and Brown kids in the district have been asked to wait too long for meaningful change. As someone looking at my own biases and privilege, here's what leapt out at me from the pages of Cory's report. Comments recorded about how racism plays out specifically in District 65 schools. Quote, "With white parents, it's, 'I'm going to make your life terrible till I get what I want.'" Quote, "When two kids are involved, but I end up seeing the black male. If I don't follow up, I don't see white kids." Parents are, quote, "Met with resistance when it comes to having their children of color placed into higher math classes." Quote, "The disproportionate placement of homeless students in the ACC program." Quote, "The white kids are very racist in middle school." Quote, "There were four strong candidates, but they were never interviewed." Quote, "Ironic that in our huge Head Start program, not one Black teacher. They keep hiring white women." Quote, "There is still a lot of hypocrisy in the district. The district caters to white affluent parents who have access to lawyers, who can dictate their child's education plan, often at the expense of children whose families, who do not have those resources." For me, it's a relief to see these inconvenient truths in print, though I understand from those with more history in the district that this isn't the first time that truths like these have appeared in an official report. I see an increasing number of studies that show the many ways in which racism in schools is bad for the white kids too. And that kids who are exposed to people who are different from themselves are better at critical thinking, better at problem-solving, and later are more valuable to their employers. I'm very excited about seeing these recommendations become reality. And again, I urge you to create a timeline for swift implementation with crystal-clear metrics for evaluating their success. I hope this report is the dawn of a new, more equitable day for District 65. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Tracy Johnson.
Hello. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to, the latitude to speak. I'm in Evanston. My address is 1831 Darrell Avenue for two years now. So, I've been on the outside looking in, and tonight I've been immersed to the inside. A lot of the questions, concerns that I have, I've learned answers for from listening to the other citizens speak. Fortunately, I would like to say that I've written, Dr. Goran, we met before, and the attention to my concerns were not really addressed. I started my first letter to the board, to Dr. Goran, that I'm a father of a son in the ACC program, and gave my accolades for the program, also my concerns. My return letter was addressed Ms. Johnson, instead of Mister, for two consecutive responses. And I see that concern from the citizens to tonight, that there is very little concern with the parents and children of Black and Brown students. I was going to say that you put the TWE program and the AC program together, but they're very different programs. They are differently, I believe, and approached differently, and two different entities altogether. If you're speaking about Latinos, you can immerse the language and the culture very easily into academia. But when you speak African, because of our history here in America, that merge is difficult. It's almost unknown, if you will, until you begin to learn, until you begin to have a generation, another generation, that have grown up in a program like an ACC. My son's been in a program for almost two years now. Huge difference, but it's still not enough. He is, compared to other students who go to traditional schools, he is far beyond in his solidity of his personality as an African male, even though his mother's white. And he's been told that he could not, by his mother, be accepted into the white community as a white man, but he could as an African man. And so, it's very telling about the truth of a mother to say that to her son, and to see that the board, and even Evanston, as progressive as Evanston is, still has a lot of growing to do. And I would plead the board that you should take the concerns of the citizens here very seriously. My proposal would be that if this behavior continues, that the citizens should take our children out of the school district and start the homeschool, and maybe then that money will speak louder than our words. Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, the consent agenda. Anya, who has that motion?
Did I skip one? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped Superintendent Board Comments. My apologies. Down at the bottom of page there. So, no, no, go ahead. My apologies.
No worries. And I thank all the citizens who spoke. And let me just do a few quick highlights of what's been going on in the district. And I really have great pleasure to talk about a young King Arts student who conducted his own symphony. And I don't know if people have heard about this, but Howard Godfrey, who was an eighth grade student at King Arts, wowed audience members at the school's spring concert with the premiere of an original symphony he composed, arranged, and conducted for a 21-piece symphonic band. What started as a melody in his head and took nearly two months to complete, turned out to be an incredibly inspiring piece played by our talented student musicians at King. This is such an amazing and impressive accomplishment for any composer, let alone one who is still in middle school. And I want to offer our heartfelt congratulations to Howard, and perhaps we can bring him to a board meeting, if we can get him in a little bit earlier so he can do his homework. Over the last month, District 65 celebrated Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week and recognized teachers, educational support staff, and our administrators across the district. We really cannot thank all of our staff members and all of our staff colleagues enough for all that they do. I'm deeply grateful for each one of our over 1,400 team members, for all that they do to make a difference in the lives of children in the community. Special thanks to our PTAs, our families, and our staff members for planning special activities, lunches, and celebrations to honor our hard-working team across our 18 schools. And then finally, at the end of last month, our district held a special reregistration event to support families new to the United States in either enrolling or re-enrolling in a District 65 school. To better meet the needs of our families, interpretation for Arabic, French, Spanish, and Swahili-speaking families was provided. In addition, the Ronald McDonald Care Mobile was on-site to provide physical examinations and vaccinations for students at no cost to their parents. I want to thank our team for putting this event on, and also thanks to our community partners, including the Evanston Public Library, the YMCA, and the YWCA for joining us and helping our families connect with local resources. And that's my announcement. No worries.
Any board comments? All right. And now, we will move on to the consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, retirements, and separations. April 2017 Board Meeting Minutes. February 2017 Policy Committee Meeting Minutes. Destruction of March 2015 Closed Session Audio Recording. March 2017 List of Bills, Treasurers Report, and Budget Amendment. District-wide Lincolnwood and Kingsley School Gift Acceptance. FY18 Nutrition Service Satellite Meals Program Contract, and the FY18 Treasurers Bond Renewal.
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. And then...
If I may just jump in as an addendum to the action items that you just approved. You just also approved the appointment of several of our new principals in the district. And I want to take an opportunity to introduce them to the community. And so, as I call your name, if you'd stand up and at least acknowledge your presence here, it's a pleasure to introduce Ginger Lumpkin, who's the new principal at Walker Elementary. It's indeed a pleasure to introduce Latarcha Green, who's the new principal at Dawes Elementary. Again, a pleasure to introduce Jessica Plaza, who's the new principal at Orington Elementary. We also have two longstanding colleagues here in the district who have taken on interim assignments, and we are so honored that they would be willing to jump into the fray, and we really look forward to working with them. Pleasure to introduce Michelle Bornet-Thomas, who will be the interim at Lincolnwood Elementary. And Donna Sokolowski, who will be the interim at Dewey Elementary. Even as our five colleagues get to know each other this evening, the one thing that's really quite exciting is as they share a commitment to teaching and learning as it relates to building the strong teams in our schools, to really diving deep on parent engagement, as has been suggested tonight, and in making the lives of all of our kids better. And so, welcome to District 65, and we look forward to the work that we have ahead, and the engagement that we have ahead, and the fun that we have ahead. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, the ratification of the contract between the District 65 Board of Education and District 65 Educational Secretarial and Clerical Association. Joey?
I move that the Board of Education approve and direct the board president to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education and the District 65 Educational Secretarial and Clerical Association substantially in the form of the agreement presented to the board.
Second.
Second. Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Halpern?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. And now, we have a slight, as we approved in our motion before, we have a slight amendment to the agenda. We are going to first bring Ms. Wallace up to discuss our equity work update. And a side of that would be a better way to preface then when we talk about the equity policy. So, do you want to...
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words and welcome Cory Wallace and Ismael Nunez as they come forward. This is an exciting moment for us. We engaged in a very deep dive into our journey on equity less than a year ago. And as we did so, we worked with Cory Wallace, who's an independent consultant and who has worked with members of the school community around a wide range of issues, around training, around the development of equity statement, around the development of an equity policy, around work on our hiring processes, as we build our lens towards equity in our hiring processes, and around what will... processes, and around what we'll be presenting tonight, which are, as a report, specifically around the equity walks that she conducted in a comprehensive manner across our 18 schools. As I see this, I think it's an important moment for all of us as a board and an administration to dive into the report as presented by Cory and to really look at some of the recommendations. If we have clarifying questions and want to learn more, absolutely. And then, over the next probably month and a half or two, we will be focusing on our planning, our response to the report, and how we will move forward with recommendations and other efforts that we have to carry out the work that we've started again on training, on hiring, on understanding our teaching and learning practices, and on really shifting into what is a very focused mindset on equity. So with that, and I think I spoke long enough so that you could be set up, it's a pleasure to introduce Cory Wallace, who will walk us through a presentation around the report.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. First of all, as you said, Cory Wallace, and I am really thrilled to have had the opportunity to work on this project for the district. I'll be sharing an overview of the past nine months to a year involving the equity audit and the process of the equity walks, as well as the activities that were done in parallel to support the work and the needs that are going on in the district. And I will say, I am a product of District 65 schools, so this work is very important to me. I have two children who attended District 65 and are now at ETHS. And so, again, this has been truly a labor of love. So we're going to start out by just going through what equity is, why we're talking about racial equity specifically, the approach that went into the actual walks as a part of the audit, and then the findings and recommendations in order to move forward. And as I mentioned, there were several initiatives and efforts underway that supported the needs that are current right now in addressing the gap as much as possible. So I'll explain those as well. And so equity really is about fairness and justice, and people getting what they need and deserve in order to reach their full potential. It is oftentimes confused with equality, not just in education, but in other spaces. And so, in going through the walks, many people ask, well, what are we talking about? How are we defining equity? And this is how it's defined. I like to remind people that if you have more than one child, you treat your children according to who they are and what their needs are, and that's equity, right? So if you have a child who has an allergy, you don't feed that child certain foods, right? If one kid likes one thing and another likes something else, you treat them according to who they are so that they can get where they want to go. And similarly, as a school district, we want to make sure that our students' individual needs are being met with the resources that we have so that they can reach their potential and get where they're going to go in life. So why are we talking about equity and racial equity? I'm going to start out by talking about who our students are, right? So we know that we have an extremely diverse student body, approximately half of which are students of color, a third are low-income, and 13% have disabilities, 12% English-language learners, and that number is growing, and we have 3% homeless. So this is who our kids are. This work is all about our children, right? So what I'd like everyone to do is actually, I want you to actually name the dominant group when the category comes up on the screen. And so I know there's a lot of different people in here, board members and audience members, but please indulge me in just saying out loud what you think the dominant group is when it comes to this category. So when it comes to gender, what would you say the dominant group is?
Female.
Male.
Male.
Ability?
Able.
Income?
High.
Wealthy. Can you all see the board?
Yeah, it's right over here.
Sorry, I'm looking here, and I'm like, wait. Okay, what about sexual orientation?
Heterosexual.
Straight. And religion?
Christian.
Language?
English.
And race? So this, thank you, first of all. We all are in here and coming from many different places, but the reality is, we didn't all take the same class or the same course, but we know the answers to these questions because it speaks to our understanding of power in society, and that also plays out in our school system. So I think that's really important in terms of setting the foundation for this work and understanding how those power systems are at play. When we're talking about this work in racial equity, sometimes people ask, and oftentimes people ask, well, what about poverty, and what about those other pieces of our identity? And of course, we have many different pieces, intersecting pieces, that make us who we are. But racism, especially in the context in which we're living, isn't about how you look, it's about how people assign meaning to the way that you look. And so we need to keep that in mind as we do this work. Some of you may have seen the image in the bottom left before, when I presented early on at the beginning of the school year. For those of you who don't know, the Sankofa bird is from Ghana. It's a bird that is always looking backwards because in order to know where we are, we have to know where we've come from and how we're going to move forward. And so that, again, really informs the work that was done this year around the audit in terms of where have we come and how are we going to move forward. And I share this with you, this comes from Sonia Nieto, who's a very respected educator in her book, Affirming Diversity. And she says that "The pain and alienation of the immigrant experience, however, have really been confronted in our schools. Although we almost all have an immigrant past, very few of us know or even acknowledge it, it's an important part of departure for beginning our journey into multicultural education. This journey needs to begin with teachers who themselves are frequently unaware of or uncomfortable with their own ethnicity. By going through a process of re-education about their own backgrounds, their family's pain, and their rich legacy of stories, teachers can lay the groundwork for students to reclaim their own histories and voices." And so, again, whether you are a classroom teacher, or whether you're an adult in the building, or whether you're a parent, we are all members of this community, and we are charged with taking care of our children. And our children are watching us, and so the way that we interact with each other very much informs the way our kids are going to treat one another and learn to engage with us as well. So again, looking back specific to Evanston, I think it's important to note that prior to 1940, there were Black people that had teaching certificates in this community. They were not allowed to teach in our schools. They taught in Chicago schools instead, or they taught Sunday School at local churches. Lorraine Morton, who I think many people know, she's a former mayor, she was one of the first Black teachers in Evanston. Charles Boyer is the first Black person hired at Foster School. He was hired to keep kids in line. He did eventually become a teacher. And Helen Cooper is a young woman who, in the early 1930s, attended Evanston High School as well as Northwestern University. She was an excellent student. Unfortunately, her teachers and professors refused to give her the A's that she had earned based on the belief that Negroes don't get A's. So again, when we look at our context of Evanston and right here, it's really important to have this understanding so that we know how we got to where we are and how we're going to move forward. And moving forward involves having this educational ecosystem in balance, where our students are at the center, and that we, as adults, regardless of our title and our role, are working together to build a more equitable learning environment, and really to eliminate that racial predictability that we see in achievement as well as in discipline. So we're trying to interrupt that, and that's what this work has been about. So the approach involves equity walks. Over the course of the past nine months, I visited about 20, I visited 20 schools, including Family Focus and the Family Center. There were 233 focus groups that took place, as small as individual, one-on-one, and as large as up to 20 people at a time. I spoke to over 500 parents, teachers, support staff, and administrators, and approximately 1,000 students. For the middle school level, students were clustered in groups, and for the younger grades, I would go into the classroom and actually speak with a whole class of students. There was also an online instrument that was developed in order to gather the voices of people who may not have been able to attend one of the walks in person or wanted to share in that regard more anonymously, and that was, over 1,400 people responded online. The questions that were asked in the various stakeholder groups drew from a core set of questions that were obviously tailored to the different groups, so parents got slightly different questions than teachers. But they were also, as I mentioned, developmentally appropriate based on students' grades. And so kindergartners, for example, were talked to as an entire class about their home language, their perception of school and friends, and how they see themselves compared to others. And consistently, our youngest children, kindergarten through second grade, named skin, color, and hair as differences that they see and notice in terms of when they compare themselves to others. And this is supported by research in early childhood. Some of the common questions and answers that came up, I asked every adult stakeholder group, have you heard the saying, "Every child, every day, whatever it takes"? And if so, what are your thoughts on that? And everyone, the majority of people, have heard of it, but there was definitely a disconnect between the words and the actions, and people felt that there was inconsistency in that, that it's something that we definitely strive to do, but questioning, are we actually doing that? Also, I asked people, had they seen or heard the district's Racial and Educational Equity Statement, which was adopted by the board last August? And if so, what are their thoughts on it? And most had not heard of it. People who were administrators or perhaps higher level in the organization knew what it was, but most did not. And so I would then started carrying it around with me and would pass it out, and people then said, well, this is great, but how are we going to do this? Right? And we'll get to the how a little bit later. I also asked groups of the different focus groups, what students are best and least served by the school? And although there were a range of answers, consistently, people stated that, many stated that the best served students have well-resourced parents who advocate strongly with lawyers at times. So again, this sort of speaks to some common themes that were happening throughout the different focus groups. Again, after listening to all of these voices, several patterns emerged. And I also want to note that I, when necessary, use Spanish to speak with parents who needed that as a resource. Those could have been one-on-one or in some of the schools that had that requirement. So after listening to all of the voices, some patterns that emerged were a need for racial literacy throughout the district at all levels. Again, a very common response was, or situation was, hearing a kid say, "You're racist," or "That's racist," and then that being met with uneven responses by the adults based on their comfort level in addressing it and turning it into a teachable moment. Also, a broad-based desire for more equity professional development, specifically social justice in education, institutional racism, and power privilege and inequality. We had a November 8 Institute Day that focused, that provided an opportunity for everyone in the district to engage in equity activities, and that was one of the things that came from there as well. A concern regarding the over-representation of Black and Latinx students in special education and experiencing behavioral consequences such as ODRs and suspensions. A desire for increased time for social-emotional learning to address student needs, and a need for more consistency in the amount of multiculturalism in the curriculum. Specifically, Social Studies was named at many times. There was also a concern regarding the low number of Black teachers and low retention rates for Black teachers and teachers of color, teachers that reflect students' demographics. There was a need for a sense of urgency in attending to and addressing the needs of our lowest-performing and most marginalized students and families, and a desire for accountability and clear, consistent messaging from leadership to focus and prioritize versus juggling multiple initiatives. There was a need to create welcoming spaces and opportunities throughout the district, specifically here at the district office in JEH. And there was a concern regarding the effects of busing and the lack of a neighborhood option for many Black students. And then the last but not least is a need for the development of respectful, trustworthy relationships. So these are sort of the patterns that emerged, again, after going through the focus groups. So based on those findings, there are eight recommendations that are here, and I'm going to go through each of them. Again, the first, going back to the level of racial, increasing the level of racial literacy, social-emotional learning, and culturally-relevant teaching throughout the district. So in order to do this, requiring equity training for all employees, starting with Beyond Diversity, which would include, is a two-day training, including pre- and post-meetings, as well as SEED, Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. Identifying a means for incorporating racial literacy into the curriculum, such as aligning the curriculum with the K-12 anti-bias framework. And interrupting disproportionality that's happening in special education, discipline, and math. The second recommendation is to address the detrimental impact of math placement. Kids can clearly see who's who based on math levels, and they name that. Devise an enrollment management strategy that minimizes the disproportionate impact of busing on Black and Latinx students, and increases family and family access to schools within walking distance of their homes. So these are the first three. The fourth is to develop and implement a plan that addresses the following goals with regard to TWE and the ACC programs. To address the racial disproportionality among English-dominated TWE students. To strengthen and fully integrate ACC and TWE, for example, creating schools where TWE and ACC are combined into a single instructional approach where they are fully integrated. Dispelling the myth that ACC is only for Black students. Ending the isolation of TWE teachers and students. And developing and strengthening TWE in the sixth to eighth grade. So again, I think for people who may not be as familiar with TWE, it's a model that has English, half the students are English-dominated and half are Spanish-dominated. And the patterns that we're seeing is that of the English-dominated students, they're predominantly white students with very few students of other races and Black students. And so this would help to address that. The fifth recommendation is to develop a plan to address racial representation of teachers and to increase recruitment, hiring, and retention of individuals that have an equity mindset, starting with some of the work that was done this year around affinity groups for employees to address those different social identity groups as well. The sixth is to create inclusive, welcoming spaces and opportunities throughout the district, starting with a parent center or a parent welcome center. Piloting a parent or family-seed cohort and developing district-wide parent affinity groups based on parents' different identities, social identities. Creating a parent mentor program and employing bilingual family liaisons. Hopefully, people who have interpreter training, and if not, to provide that so that they are having meaningful communication among people who need to communicate in languages other than English. The seventh is to institutionalize the district's commitment to equity and empowerment through dedicated staffing and organizational structures. So for example, creating an office of equity and empowerment to maintain a focus on equity and the implementation of the equity plan. And finally, to have a timeline, so to develop an implementation plan by the fall, by October 31st, 2017. In order to get there, a potential roadmap would be to address the findings and recommendations. The roadmap that's shared in the report is created for planning purposes, and it's aligned with the Racial and Educational Equity Statement. You'll see on the next slide, there's numbers in the objective column that correspond to the guiding principles of the Racial and Educational Equity Statement. The statement itself, if you pull it up, is not numbered, but I numbered it in the report so that it would be more clear. And then use the existing annual and quarterly reporting processes to implement and execute the plan. So those pieces are already underway through the strategic plan, so building upon those as ways to report out. So again, this would be an example of what that would look like, and this would obviously have to be fleshed out, and this is only a sample, but you would have the different objectives and what we're trying to do with strategies of how we're going to do them in actual success metrics. So in order to move forward, again, in the report, there's an implementation plan template that includes what the specific recommendation is and the task, who's responsible, the deadline, and what those success metrics are, and that will be determined in the future based on the board's decisions. Now, as I mentioned, in addition to the actual walks and collecting the data that happened over the past nine months, there were several other things happening in parallel to address what was going, to address the gap and understanding the urgency to do something now. And so I'm going to speak about some of those things here. The District 65 created an equity leadership team last spring, which met throughout the year. It's comprised of sort of non-traditional leaders who are really committed and have the will to do this work and are trying to help guide the work in the district. There was a book study done, Despite the Best Intentions, last summer, where the principals got together over the summer and read that, and also had an opportunity to meet with the author, who is also local, and get his feedback. Some of the teachers, I mean, some of the principals actually had copies of the book available in their schools for teachers to read and do book studies as well. The first day of school began with an opening video of Dr. Gloria Ladsen-Billings, who speaks about culturally-relevant teaching, and that was, and she was framing what we talk, typically we talk about the achievement gap. She termed it and framed it in terms of an opportunity debt, and so that's how everyone started the school year. We piloted SEED, the Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity, which is a cohort, a professional learning cohort, adopted the Racial and Educational Equity Statement, as I mentioned. We also developed an equity website and calendar. So for those people who don't know, please go to the District 65 homepage and click on the button in the top right. You can access the calendar and see what is going on in the community that may be of interest to you, as well as keep abreast of the different progress that we're making around equity and what's happening with equity to get updates. I did several training and workshops for various groups. Some of those are listed there with principals, assistant principals, at the new staff orientation and with new staff throughout the year, as well as at the beginning of the school with special services and cabinet. And then we explored various professional learning opportunities. So there were small teams that attended the Regional Summit for Courageous Conversations About Race last summer, Race Forwards Racial Justice Leadership Institute. The fall National Summit for the Courageous Conversations About Race, and then Teaching Tolerance had a Confronting Bias training that was held at the Holocaust Museum in February. Additionally, the Black-Latino Parent Advisory met, as did the Equity Advisory. There were fall and spring meetings. Some Beyond Diversity training took place for about 40 staff District 65 employees throughout the district in accompanying pre- and post-meetings. There was collaboration and support with Human Resources to work with principals and to try to come up with some questions that would be equity interview questions to get at hiring with an equity mindset and what that looks like, and some rubrics were developed to start... There was collaboration and support with Human Resources to work with principals and to try to come up with some questions that would be equity interview questions to get at hiring with an equity mindset and what that looks like. And some rubrics were developed to start, to begin to implement those. And we also inserted and integrated some equity questions into the employee satisfaction survey. As I mentioned, there was also the November 8th Institute Day that provided an opportunity for everyone in the district, regardless of their level or stat or role, to engage in four strands of equity where they heard a keynote and then engaged in a follow-up workshop related to equity. There was a pilot of the cultural competence for social justice self-assessment that was done with Delp members and at Dawes and at Bessie Rhodes as well. And then there were a small team of middle school students who attended the SOAR, Students Organized Against Racism Conference, at Northwestern University. So again, going back to what needs to happen, obviously, our teachers are in class every day with our students. And so culturally relevant teaching requires racial literacy to support social identity development so that student achievement can increase while overall climate improves. So our children cannot learn if they are not comfortable, if they're not safe, if they're not ready to learn, if they don't feel good about who they are as individuals and the different social identities that they hold. So that's really what this is all about, helping us as adults to get the skills that we need to better interact with each other and so that we can model that for our kids and so that we can better address their needs so that they can learn. And so I'd like to close by sharing with you a video, and you'll get to hear the voices of some of our students and staff members based on their experiences and some of the activities that I described.
equality, treating everyone exactly the same regardless of their differences or situations. Act weight, people get what they need and deserve in order to reach their goal of potential. In August 2016, District 65 embarked on their advocacy work to ensure that all students and families receive what they need and deserve in order to reach their goal of potential. Part of this story included the formation of two CED cohorts. CEDs have given that confession development program, always are creating communities built in capacity for self-reflection and engaging dialogue around creating a more equitable environment. During the 2016-2017 school year, there were 60 District 65 staff members who participated in this CED cohort. Here are some of their stories and the impact this cohort has had on them.
CED was kind of a whole bit of an addition and it was why I was taught that I didn't even know that I had it. And if, you know, different people have done my career work, and I have been talking to me about CED training, I was training, and I said, you should do this, you should do this. My feelings is feeling exhaustion and overwhelmedness. And sort of like, I've spent so many years thinking and working, more thinking than working, but toward everything and all random feeling ashamed and guilty about my place, my position in the world. And it's sort of had this feeling of like, oh, I've done all this work and time and doing more, okay, and more trouble, all the things I've done wrong. And then what I didn't know until I got into this work was that there's this openness and this grace and this awareness that comes when you do this work that is the most wonderful thing that comes. So that's kind of the thing about all this program again, it's so inclusive and it creates this state of challenging states where we can all question the way things are. It's also the conversations can happen and curriculum can move forward in a space that doesn't happen anywhere else. This isn't how we talk about gender and race in anyone else that has experienced in our society. So it's kind of like, it feels like you're cracking something open, is what it feels like.
It's really, I feel like going back, the children are starting to really think they're a much more competitive lens because I questioned people online, or example, we did this project that's on more about benefits. We're starting convention, convention of the signs. And I asked, it's one of those, you know, maybe you have a friend, oh, I'm bringing one, and I'm like, hmm, what do you know about all those people? And they're like, oh, well, all that right then. And I'm like, uh-huh. And then like, do you know any other advantages who might be more intersectional, and we'll be talking about intersectionality. But kids are always like, what's up with that? Do you know any other advantages? And they're like, there's this girl that told me to go back to this. And I'm like, who, what was her name? And they're like, we don't know. And so I was like, oh, I don't know. And the same thing is happening over and over again. And when I hear it's like, that's the point, that's his young's point. And they're like, really getting it, like, really getting it, buried our holes in their education. And they're starting to question equity in terms of what are they taught, which to me is what this is all about. This is kind of, I think, that can be most personally, but more importantly, in my classroom, it's helped the kids talk to their parents about racism and all the homonisms that there are, and it's also helped me communicate better with parents and think about who's giving the help.
I have got many resources, I was just doing, sharing circles sort of with my students about the role model, which we had at CED. There's so much more that I can learn, and the children that come from my room are going to have so much more exposure, and I feel like I'm getting the support that I need, but I'm just getting exposed or getting percussion development that also. There have been times, it happens where I was discriminated against. There have been times where I saw my friends or my family being discriminated against, or sometimes it was like, what's happening? Because as teachers, we need to be aware of that, because our privileges or our stories are who we are, and we need to realize that we have to come past our stories and be able to, we have to be open to it. And if we're not open to it, we're not really be able to reach our children.
And I think one of the biggest connections we can, the work that I've been doing at CED and the work that I do at District 65, is in how I've interacted with other people, students, teachers, and families. I have learned to not make assumptions or challenge certain narratives that come to the table about families engaging or ability to engage and really encourage myself and my colleagues to come up with different hypotheses, or a variety of hypotheses about what may be of the outer area or their need to be involved. So I think it just really has widened my ability to think about how I interact with people or what I, to catch myself in those assumptions I'm making. And I find that it has had a true impact on how I'm interacting with students and parents, ensuring that I allow the parent voice and need for I have a lot to say. And also just checking how I'm engaging families. It actually widened some of the strategies I've been using based on thinking differently about different situations or families getting in common, and it's had more success bringing families into schools by allowing there are things to be heard.
In February 2017, 12 middle school students from District 65 attended the Students Organized Against Racism Conference. These 12 students participated in a two-day conference training at Northwestern University under the direction of Edison's Honorable School Soror Executive Board members. At this conference, these students engaged in the district's advocacy initiative and learned about institutional practices and evidence of affect law students, especially students of color, and how the ages of change. Here are their experiences.
I think at our school, a lot of that is there, and a lot of them have challenged a lot of college offers. And so, like, they have so much excitement. I've been one of those who's trying, you know, because I'm so excited that they have to go to college. And so I think, I think I've showed just how important education is to that profession.
So I think the way to talk about things is, don't just start to question, and you won't answer to their, like, what they, what they want. I think that's a question, you can sometimes have like, answer question, if that's a, you know, this is where we have to go, for, 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 and you hear, especially at the end, you're like, crunches of that real time. We don't really have any time to be discussing things like that. So I, that would get like, very time to talk about, so it is.
I couldn't believe it to be long, because I would like to, I would like to do that in, I would go two days of like, huh, like, I, I was sure of it, we need to go back, but the same people and all, like, just to be then, like, they never understood how high she was with other people, that, in like, history of this superiority. That in sorry, um, they teach you that, and I have worked with you the same pattern, so you have to be respectful to all kinds of patterns, you know, you know, what their pattern is. And some different than others, and we just have to respect them. Um, remember those very professions, like, most people don't understand, but the ones that you made a power point, and that's a problem that we, you can solve, evaluate, and fix yourself.
I think if you're more aware that it's going on, so when you see someone who's like, getting bullied, you can tell them that this, okay, that, who is something that they're...
I think it's like, we have these difficult conversations, like, we want to make it better, but like, you know, long journey toward that, these conversations are gonna help. Yes, anyway?
Yeah.
It's a journey, yeah.
Um, for me, I think that kids somewhere ready to be given credit for to have these conversations, and it's important to give kids a space where they feel safe to share their opinions and make mistakes, but still talking about, you know, important values they experience every day.
I think these little conversations help students think correctly and helps them recognize their people's points of view to develop empathy, which helps them to find, you know, the right people and areas they need to, for our pets.
I really appreciate how many teachers on my social media are trying to open the door, but once that bell rings, it's like, oh, sorry, you should get to shut the door and you have to go to your natural class. So I think sort of, in the face of like, we have time for you, and I think that a lot of those little two customers, my, that, because I know I have a certain conversation, and then it's the next, and then it's the next, and that's last, and so it's kind of like, but everybody's gonna keep piling stuff from the, whatever you're gonna have to end with. When I, when I go finish spots, I think it's just, you have to definitely, and then, basically, cease and desist, just like, yeah.
We can use any conversation around, like, we raise, in fact, I think, they, of course, we can actually have a solution, because in my years of experience, that's the only thing that's been a solution, to put people together and have a conversation. And I think that happens in, because it's a community that's made up of communities where people are together. Conversations are happening, there's calls, just not happening to collect, so that was a, that was a chance to heal, because it is a very fractured, broken community where everybody doesn't see how, 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 just a little talk, we, that we find out. That's just me, really, you know, to give them a designated space, making that, making that work, because we get there, and then we, we, we can, boy, we actually have a, we will have a, you know, just a movie, whatever I think it is, and that brings us, that that person, we, 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 you know.
So again, that was our students and our parents, I'm sorry, teachers and students' words. And I just would like to thank Superintendent, the board, all the parents and students and District 65 employees who spoke their truths and shared their experiences and part of this work, and really looking forward to the commitment to the journey ahead. So thank you, everyone. If there's any questions, thank you.
Thank you so much, Cory. I want to open it up to the board for questions and comments. Who would like to start? Joey?
I have a loaded question that won't be able to be answered right now, but it's for, I think it's for the board, it's for the administrative team that's here, and certainly for Cory and members of the community. In terms of the equity work, how do you define what the metrics of success are? With discipline, with taking down other barriers, there's a whole range, school climate, I mean, it's deep. It's gonna take a lot of time. We all know that. But how do you strategically take all of this work and information and the knowns and create not just tasks to accomplish, but also figure out how do you define what success will look like so that over the next six months, 12 months, whatever, we know whether we're moving in the right direction?
I think it's gonna involve a group to sit down and really prioritize, based on the recommendations, what is the, what is most urgent, and to work on a plan to start building that there. It's gonna, there are some, in the report, there are some suggestions, but really, it's gonna be a matter of how do we prioritize based on the limited time and resources that we have to do what's most important, what's most urgent for our groups. So I think that's gonna take input from several people here.
And I appreciate what Cory just said, and I think your question's spot on, and we don't have all the answers today, but the report falls at a really important time. We're ending the school year, we have the time that we spend to plan for the next year and the years ahead, and to really intertwine this work, as it is intertwined, with the strategic plan, and to come out with a bunch of indicators. I think we have to say first and foremost, student achievement is student achievement is student achievement. And we have to look at that and see what sort of growth we can make, and when we're not making growth, what do we do about that? So that's one piece. But I think there's so many interesting component parts to what Cory has presented as a series of recommendations that we have to take on, and if we're gonna take on any or all of the recommendations, we have to make sure that we can deliver on them. And then we have to measure our implementation process as well. And so those are other types of indicators that we can move forward on. And I think we have some practice on this, we have a lot of practice on this, as we've worked really hard to make the strategic plan something that doesn't gather dust on the shelf. And so as we move forward on this work, this can't gather dust on the shelf. This, we have to move forward, and as Cory presented the litany of two or three slides worth of activities that we've done since last May, it's a remarkable amount of work that we've done. Cory has helped, Ismael has helped, the cabinet has helped, our teachers, our leaders have helped. And so it's a really remarkable amount of work. It's necessary work, it's not sufficient. And so we have to get to where we can really sort of actualize how we move forward. So that's a first stab at answering, and I think as we come back to, and as we interpret and look at the recommendations within the context of the work of the district, and we come back with action plans, we'll be able to answer that in a little more clear way. Thank you.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, I'll go.
All right, go for it.
Thinking about our equity statement and honoring and building upon the strengths and assets of every student, you just shared with us some qualitative information that had student voice. You talked to a lot of people. You heard parents speak, you heard teachers speak, you kind of pulled out some of the honesty. Have you ever longitudinally stayed with an organization or come back to hear those same voices 18 months later, 36 months later, to do a qualitative assessment to see, are the tones and feelings changing? From the same people where you collected the initial baseline information?
I have not done that. I would be open to doing that, but I have not done that. In my past experience, definitely open to it.
Especially thinking about our youngest students or our teachers that have been here for a while.
Yep.
If we're professionally developing well, if the climate is changing, theoretically, the voice and tone and words would change too, right?
Yeah. No, I think that's really, that would be very important to do.
So, Joey, if you have anything to say. Who wants to go next?
I have a couple of quick questions, but first off, thank you so much, Cory, for the work that you've done in dedicating this year to helping this incredibly important issue in our community. You know, I've only had a couple of years myself in this district, but my son goes to Kingsley, and so I've been pretty immersed in that community. And a couple of things, I'm surprised, I just want, I shouldn't say I'm surprised, I was wondering what your thoughts were on, given your experience in the broader, in the broader district, and that there are other areas, I think, that have been identified, at least in the Kingsley community, as being other barriers to opportunity, and those include lunch, recess, before and after care. Obviously, we've already heard about early childhood today, and the lack of access to Title I funds for a lot of students. I was just wondering what your perspective was based on the work that you've done.
Well, I think on lunch and recess is where I've heard comments about students pointing out, you know, you're white or you're black, and saying that's racist and that either being addressed or not. I've also heard adults talk about the racial division that happens during lunch in terms of who accesses hot lunch or how people line up, so that's also an issue that came up in the walks. So I think things like that have definitely emerged as well. And I would also like to say, as things came up during the walks themselves, I definitely shared... shared those perspectives with principals as we went along to address whatever those findings were so that they could be addressed at that time instead of waiting till the end.
And one last really quick question is, I was wondering if you'd be willing to, um, share with us the, uh, survey results?
The survey of the online survey?
Yes.
Um, I can talk with, um, our, the RAD department and see how we can best share that. I mean, some of them are included in, in the, um...
I saw the appendix online, yeah, but they're, you know, it's a very robust survey that you...
Yeah, there's a, I mean, there's a lot of data, so, um, but I can talk to...
I don't shy away from that.
...Peter about that. Thank you so much. Yep.
Um, I'm just curious if you could talk a little bit more, I know that you had the opportunity to, I, I think you said, uh, come to J E H. Um, if you could talk a little bit more about, um, any feedback about the alignment of our K through eight, um, opportunities with our pre-K opportunities and how that can contribute to addressing feelings of and issues of access and marginalization?
Yeah, I think, um, the work that we're doing, it has to include early childhood. Obviously, I think, um, sometimes it's the perception that's sort of forgotten, but it is definitely, obviously, a part of the district and I think working together to do the same thing, I mean, I will say going forward, we're trying, we actually have some of the early childhood and, and family center participants in the current, like, seed cohort, for example. Um, and I know we've had, uh, conversations earlier this year about early childhood in terms of the literacy work that I know Stacy's been working very hard on and making sure that that's happening for our early childhood teachers as well, so that we are working more assist, more, um, collaboratively, so that the, they're getting the same benefits, um, throughout and so that they're not marginalized or left out. Yeah.
I wanna thank you and, and, um, Ismael's and administration here for, and, and directors and teachers and, and students who've all participated. And again, we're brave enough to, to have these tough conversations and a, and a conversation that is gonna continue to be difficult, uh, in regards to how we get folks to, to, how we get this district on, on, um, in the plane of equity, right? Uh, where it's embedded, uh, in everything that we do, uh, when we make curricular decisions, uh, when we make budget decisions, uh, you know, having, having an equity lens, uh, and making it something that has become second nature. Uh, what's interesting, uh, from the video, you see, you see that, that, uh, what children learn about themselves and about their country is, is second nature and particularly for, you know, children of color. It's, it's, uh, it's, they, they know that what we learn is that it's, it's, you know, it's old white men, like the teacher was saying, uh, that, that, that has become second nature. Uh, and there's some, some, uh, one of the parents alluded here in, in the public comments, you know, we talk about how, you know, the ACC program is, is one of those programs that again, uh, his child feels, you know, proud and, and, and it's something that, that, again, you, having been a teacher in, 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 uh, in, in, in those different settings for, for different, uh, cultures, uh, again, you, you see, you don't see, um, children feeling good about themselves a lot of times. They feel, um, they feel out of place. Uh, you know, growing up, I felt out of place, um, you know, that, that, so, so to me, it's, 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 it's almost a dream come true, uh, in regards to having been a student and educator and now, you know, at, at the Board level, working with, uh, all these, um, amazing, amazing people in this town. Um, and, and again, we, we saw it with Northwestern here, who, who came and talked to us about being committed to, uh, working with us on this equity work. I mean, I think that's, that, that, it's incredible that, that we've got folks, uh, like Northwestern, uh, through the, um, early, uh, the, um, Evanston Cradle to Career, um, work, I mean, again, P, P, there, there seems to be this, this movement, right? That, that is going to try to address some of these racial, um, issues that we've had in this community for year, you know, years, certainly, you know, decades. Um, and I hope that we can continue, uh, with this momentum, uh, and, um, and I hope that we can, as a Board, uh, continue to, to, um, encourage, uh, and make a space, uh, for our educators, for our parents in this school district, uh, you, trying to make a space for them to, to, to be able to express themselves and to feel pride, uh, in their district, in themselves, uh, and in their cultures and in, in the riches that they bring to our educational settings. Uh, so, so, so thank you, thank you to all of you, uh, for all the work that you do. Um, and, um, I had, I had a question about, uh, so again, going back to, to the early childhood piece, I think it's really critical in regards to ensuring that we, um, when a child comes into our district, you know, and, and the family gets, engages with our district, uh, there needs to be this, you know, array of services that, that is just, number one, it's like what I would, as a teacher, what I would, what I would always tell my parents is like, look, uh, you, uh, you know, I don't, I, I may be a teacher, but, uh, and then you, you're, you're your child's first teacher, um, and you and I, you need to help me. I can't do this on my own, you know, this, this is a partnership, you know, and, and I think this is, is a district, that's what we need to tell all parents, is like, look, you know, this is, you know, you, we, we are, 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 are partners in, in, in this journey, uh, to, to equity. And, uh, you know, I look forward to this incredible work and, and, and that's gonna be informed, that's been informed by community and it'll form our decisions as well, uh, moving forward around equity.
Thank you. Candace?
Thank you, Cory. Um, I, I mean, it's really amazing to see a thousand students, the voices, I mean, we've talked in for years now since, uh, about getting voices of students in this type of work and so, uh, certainly, all the people you talk to is wonderful, but hearing the voices of students especially and in such a raw and rich way, I think, is really moving. And so, um, thank you for that. I, I, a couple of questions I have are really more for understanding, there was a lot of meat in the, in the report and just for me to understand a couple of things about the recommendations. Um, and so, oh, let's see what, um, so the, the first, with regard to training or professional development, is it your recommendation that, I wasn't clear in the way it was stated, just both seed and beyond diversity would be required for all staff or was it one or the other, just the way the phrasing was?
I would recommend both of them because I think that they are very complementary, um, professional learning opportunities. The beyond diversity is an intense two-day that very much focuses on racism and institutional racism in education. Um, seed is a 10-month, so it's a 30-hour experience that allows for people to, once they've been in that beyond diversity experience, to really, what do I do next with what I've learned? So ideally, someone would do that or do them very close together so they would have that space to unpack and look at all the other layers as well that seed provides, um, which is why I recommend both of them. Um, it takes, it will take longer to get everyone through seed because of the timing, the way it's structured. It's obviously easier to get people through a two-day more quickly and we can, I think the priority is, I think it's, the priority is to do them both, knowing that it's gonna take a little bit longer to get everyone through seed.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then in terms of the math placement, um, you talk about the detrimental impact. Is that in terms of opportunity to achieve or academic success or, or, or other, other components or other pers- perspectives of, I'm just trying to unpack the detriment, what, what is meant by detrimental and, and what you have observed or was it relative to academic success or other components of success?
I think it's on several levels. I think from students who say, oh, you know, I'm not smart because I'm not in that math class, to teachers who say, I'm teaching the same thing, I'm teaching the same content to two classrooms of students that look very different because we haven't put the kids where they need to be, we've listened to parents' requests instead of mixing kids the way they need to be. So, that, the message then that that communicates to our students, to our parents, is detrimental to all of us, right? Because we're not recognizing the brilliance in all of our kids and we're saying, well, certain kids have access to something and not everybody else does. So we're making a very bold statement without naming it and I think that has a detrimental impact on children and the adults in our larger system, community as well and the kids' ability to access the content and kids' then inability as they get older to say, well, maybe I don't belong here because I've heard this, I've, have not felt as, as a part of that learning space.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then again, this is more for clarification, this, the integration, the concept of integration of ACC and TWE, can you, um, flesh out a little bit, um, what you see, how you're seeing that?
Yeah, um, so the ACC, uh, well, the ACC program historically was supposed to be a district-wide program in, in two spaces and two schools. It's been, from my understanding, in one school the entire time, just as one strand. So you're the first grade ACC teacher, the second grade, and that's it. Um, and I, I think it has not been given the, based on my understanding, the, the support that it needs to be, to really have the impact that, the outcomes that we'd like to see. If you look at the theory behind ACC programs and the work of Dr. Hilliard, um, similarly, the TWE program, um, originally was intended to be, grow year by year into a full school, but it is, what it currently is, is six strands in five different schools. The only school that has two strands each is Washington. And so by strands, I mean that, again, you have the first grade TWE teacher, the second grade TWE teacher, and those teachers have been very isolated because the, the person who can work with them is in the, the next school over. So if you have a school or a couple of schools that are fully integrated, TWE and ACC, where all children are learning the tenets and the foundation, the pedagogy of the ACC curriculum and learning Spanish and English, which according to, um, the dual-language research says that kids specifically under traditionally marginalized students like black students and more poor students benefit from being in that space because it attends to their learning styles and it's, it promotes their, their identity development, their racial identity development, their social identity development. And then there are scores in terms of math and, and reading, the research shows that they do much better than their, um, than their peers. So it really is an ideal program and a way to really bring, um, some of that healing that we talked about earlier together in a way in a school so that you're not the other, you're not the TWE kid, you're not the ACC kid. Our school is about making sure that everyone is bilingual, that everyone is learning at high levels, that everyone's identities are recognized, that we understand the history of the world beyond just the United States and, and that's, and the value that, that the contributions of Africa and, and all, to, to all people. So it's really, um, I think it would be, you know, we're a lighthouse, we're a lighthouse district, this is our icon, right? So this is an opportunity to do something very different as a model, um, that a couple, only, you know, North Carolina, for example, Grand Rapids, they have programs and if you look at the research there, their students are doing very well, um, academically and from a social identity perspective as well.
Thank you. Very, very helpful. Um, and I think the only other thing, um, let's see, there's one other question. Oh, it, it was certainly enlightening, I think, you know, we've talked a lot about the need for more aggressive hiring or more successful hiring practices, um, particularly for African-American educators. And, um, the, the notion of, I, I don't know what else to call it, but replenishment, like as you see in the data, when we move from a higher percentage of black teachers to lower percentage, that, um, I think there was a reference made to a lot of those teachers that had been longstanding retiring and we haven't renewed our, our ranks at the same level. Did you, do you, did you see that that was one of the primary reasons or retention concerns of losing black teachers that may be beginning mid-career, like?
I think that, um, there's a combination of things and I think it's gonna require more work with the HR department specifically to investigate, but I think moving forward, being very intentional about how we are and where we're looking for people and how we're looking beyond sort of the traditional job fair here and there, right? So we've gotta have some very concrete plans and look in spaces, um, for example, there are certain conferences where you know that you're gonna get educators, um, that are interested in social justice, have a really strong understanding of equity and networking and going to those places and building up a pipeline so that we have people ready to go, I think will help to address that. So I don't know that I can answer specifically why the shift has happened, but I think, um, when looking at the data and also hearing stories, it would often come up, people would say, well, you know, there's one black teacher in a school or there was this, you know, we had more teachers, but then they retired and so anecdotally and then checking again with the data according to, um, HR and the RAD department, it confirms that that is happening for what, I don't know the exact reason why, but it's happening.
And so the final thing was something I did not see and so I wanted to probe around it was, um, I, I kind of expected that there would be a pattern about resource allocation or just, or mention of resource allocation, whether that would be in or within a school, across schools, you know, whether there were issues there. And I just wonder if, um, if that did come up or if, if that's a different type of analysis. Um, but that's also something certainly from, you know, a systemic and institutional standpoint that I think we want to look at, so.
I think, um, some teachers mentioned in the walks, especially teachers who had taught in different schools in the district, that they noticed differences, very clear differences in terms of how things were done. And that can be for a variety of reasons, but I think moving forward, the resource allocation is, is very important. And again, I think that's part of the next steps in future work in determining what resources do we have and where are we gonna put them, um, to support the things that are most urgent as we prioritize.
Thanks, thank you.
I just want to clarify that, I think it was implied, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding clearly, that the TWE program and ACC are programs supported and adopted and implemented by our institution that are perpetuating segregation and institutional racism within certain buildings and isolation of certain groups of students based on the programs that they're a part of or the way that they manifest climate within a building where you might have multiple strands that live in a parallel society but don't integrate because of the way they're structured.
I don't know that the programs are causing it, but I know that there is isolation...
But there's some, there's some relationship there.
Yes, because, um, the kids can say, oh, you're the TWE kids or you're the Spanish kids or you're the Mexican kids. Their kids will say that, teachers name that, and then the teachers themselves are the only one in their, in their building, in that strand, so.
Yeah, we, we could agree that when the kids are pointing at each other and calling them the, the TWE kid, that that's probably not the...
It's not, not, I don't mean to say that...
No, but it's, it's, it's not the climate necessarily that's...
No, no, it's just they're, they're noticing things around them and they're naming that, so I don't mean to say that...
Yeah, no, okay.
And I think there are two schools that have two, doesn't, do we have two strands?
No, Washington has two, is the only school that has two strands. Everyone, there's individual strands in the other schools.
So I want to follow up too on the, the ACC and TWE, um, recommendation, uh, because honestly, I, I'm not quite following the recommendation. I, I understand and have heard the concerns about, um, the students and the teachers being isolated within the schools. But I'm not entirely clear, so we say that, you know, ending the isolation and dispelling the myth that ACC is only for black students. I agree that those are important goals, but I'm, it doesn't follow necessarily to me that creating a separate school that is an ACC-TWE school, um, or that the two programs are entirely, it does, it, the recommendation doesn't necessarily follow for me based on what the concern is. So I was wondering if you could...
I think, um...
...spout on that a little bit more.
It may seem counterintuitive to people because I think in general, again, when we think about to the very beginning, the way power plays out, we, we are taught to think about these things as very separate. But the reality is when you look at historically, in all of the Spanish-speaking countries, when you look on the coast, there's dark-skinned people there, there are Afro-Latinos as part of the culture. And so I think we, this idea that it's separate, um, or that black people don't speak Spanish or that they're, that's what this is, it's, it's about addressing the isolation that currently exists and giving everyone a space to really, for kids to honor who they are, to honor what the black students bring, what the white, what every child brings and saying, you know, we value bilingualism, we're using Spanish and English. You know, if we were in a different community and we had, you know, Chinese speakers or Tagalog, that would might, those would be the languages, but the point is here, we have Spanish and English, so those would be our mediums for, for bilingualism. And then bringing into, um, into the curriculum, the core tenets of the ACC, which are about collectivism, about understanding history, honoring self, um, and I think those are also parts, there's pieces of that that are part of the, the TWE curriculum as well. So it's not, um, I see them as a way to bring those pieces together, to create a very strong curriculum and also to honor the social identity aspects of our students, um, that will also impact the broader community because we are a very divided community for other, you know, historic reasons beyond the educational system, housing. Um, but this would be a way, and again, if we're looking at, um, placing these schools in places where people can access them, where families can access them, that's gonna be really key if that is something that the district chooses to do moving forward.
Right. And I guess then that becomes more of a question, um, for us of what that means and, you know, because right now, obviously, if we have six TWE strands, um, it's still, I'll just admit, it still is not something that I totally, um, am wrapping my head around as the appropriate, um, as a pretty appropriate solution to the concerns. Um, I know one thing, for example, with ACC, uh, one of the concerns that we've heard for years is that the program has not been, um, supported and was never, I think we, you know, heard that today, it was never really implemented with fidelity and then was not fully supported as it needed to be over the years that it's, it's been in existence. Um, and so, and I know we've tried over the last couple of years at Oakden, we've, we've tried to support it a little bit more and I, I'm not sure what the results of that over this past year have been, but... past year have been, but it seems to me that that might be a recommendation to really fully with fidelity implement the program and support it in a way. And I think one of the concerns is that, you know, even just the way we market it and get students into it is not necessarily supporting the program as fully as it could be. So if that's a concern, I'm not 100% sure I understand how this addresses that concern. I don't, yeah, I don't know. Again, I'm just, I'm just having a hard time kind of, it, that to me of all of the recommendations was the most surprising one. And so I, I don't know how to reconcile sort of how unexpected it was to me with what I would have expected to see as a recommendation to supporting that program.
Yeah, I think it's a way to, you know, change, changes obviously is not easy and this is, would be very, very different. But again, I think in doing, in implementing it and doing it well would be an opportunity to look at what the research says. They talk a lot about the metalinguistic benefits to students, so students thinking about their own language, which typically with black students, we've said, don't, talk proper English, you're not speaking the right way because our, the U.S. Department of Education does not recognize the language patterns as languages. And so there's no funding tied to that. So again, looking at that history, when you have kids that are in a TWE program or black students specifically, they're thinking about their language, they're thinking about how I, they're making bridges to how I speak at home or with my friends or with my family or in different contexts, which is the same way we teach, whether we're teaching English students another language or the way when we're teaching children about language, English learners. That bridge is really important, but historically, we just, we just say, don't, don't talk that way. This is the way you're supposed to speak without acknowledging the way people speak as validating who you are and that's how you communicate. And people do understand each other. And so this is a way to bring that together in a way that I don't think most, most people really think. I mean, I think it is, it's sort of counterintuitive because it just seems like they're very different. But again, I think it's an opportunity to bring those things together.
So I would, I mean, I see the suggestion in regards to, again, when we think of two-way immersion programs, we really are doing language development, right? And one of the pieces I think that's missing with many two-way immersion programs is that cultural piece. So there is this focus on language development and particularly two languages, if you're able to get two strands. So when we think about, you know, what do we measure? We measure reading and math in order to close the achievement gaps in those particular metrics. Two-way immersion programs are proven, you know, I mean, to show that kids actually, again, start off slow, they don't, they don't do really well, they're surpassed, and then once they hit like maybe the seventh or eighth year, they shoot past the monolingual kids. And that's across race, across, again, I mean, it is, it is, it is a research-proven program when it's done with fidelity, right? And I think we've, again, we've been moving as a district closer to creating a TWE program that is moving towards fidelity. We're, I don't think we're still there yet, but we, we're getting there. So in, including the elements of, you know, African-American cult, the African-American curriculum, you know, that again, is, it's, it's something where you're talking about culture. You're talking about the history of the United States and of the world and how it's influenced by the African diaspora. And again, like Corey mentioned, you have, in Mexico, for instance, you have Veracruz where you have a large Afro-Mexican population that's just been acknowledged. And you go to Brazil, you go, you go across the world and you see the influence of African culture, right? If we really, really are honest with ourselves, American culture is actually black culture. I mean, our music, our art, I mean, it is, it is based on black music, I mean, black culture. So to me, again, it's, it may seem tough to put those two different streams, strands together because like Corey was saying, that is how we're taught to, to look at things. It actually can, can be intersectional because in life, in reality, it is, so.
I think also sometimes we tend to think of like, well, we're doing this for the black kids or the underrepresented kids or there's no benefit. White students also have a racial identity development and it's important for them to think about who they are and where they come from as well. So the benefits are for all students. These are not just benefits for a particular group, but this model, again, if done with fidelity, would benefit all children throughout the district.
And then going back to the Sonia Nieto piece, again, everybody in this country comes from somewhere else. You know, we're generations removed from where we all come from. Everybody has, has come from a culture. So, but again, we, all we learn about is, again, that, you know, George Washington, Benjamin Franklin, again, I mean, what about George Washington Carver or what about, you know, Cesar Chavez, I'm tired of Cesar Chavez. Let's learn about Dolores Duarte, who I thought, you know, was actually the person who moved, you know, who actually was the action person, you know, Cesar spoke, but Dolores acted. And that's how the farmer's work movement just happened, right? I'd love to get to that point, you know, where we're teaching kids that, again, that there's so, each of us, each and every one of us from all our different cultures have contributed to the, to the wealth in this country. And there were painful parts in it that were, and continue to be in regards to how, how this country runs. But again, it's always been this narrative about the individual person, right? When in reality, you know, countries and communities are comprised of people and good communities work together to move everybody ahead. And, you know, we've got to move past that bootstrap mentality, like, okay, you work hard and, you know, you're going to make it. In reality, I know, again, I know people, I know tons of people who are working three, four, you know, three, four jobs, working hard and just not moving. And that needs to be part of our conversation. And I really think that the quicker that we can get there, to be honest with our kids, the quicker we can get to equity and bettering the outcomes for this country. And it's, it should start here in Evanston, and let's be the pioneers.
Anya?
Yeah. So I have several thoughts, so bear with me. One of them, we heard Sean Riordan's data alluded to. And so one of the things I really appreciate is the connection between getting that data but also quickly moving to having some conversations about solutions. And I know that this has been a long road for the district, but those two things coming in close proximity, I think, is, is good. One of the things for, for folks who haven't had a chance to listen to that conversation or be exposed to that data, one of the most striking bits of information for me was that in Evanston, our gap between low income and high income is about two and a half as opposed to in some cities like Atlanta and Berkeley where the gap is six times one another. But this, and in our country, unfortunately, socioeconomic status has been connected to achievement on standardized tests. And so one of the things I appreciated is when he talked about standardized tests, he talked about them in the context of opportunity, that standardized tests are a measurement of opportunity to access certain information. And so really, again, taking that responsibility from telling someone they are either capable of achieving or not, or they're intelligent or not, to this is a measurement of your access to opportunity. But, but also what his data showed was that in Evanston, despite the fact that our income gap isn't as large, is half as large as those in Atlanta and Berkeley, our achievement gap is the same. That was heartbreaking information. His data also showed that 100, that our, our white students are performing in the 100th percentile. That's, that's great, right, that we, we can provide that kind of stellar education. But what was heartbreaking was to hear that our black students on his, in his data and our Latino students are performing below national average. That is not based on capability as individuals, that is based on access. So I'm glad that we're having this conversation and that we're having it in a, in an honest way, whether or not it's difficult because I think what, what we saw in this report and what we saw a little bit in your presentation is that our children currently are working out conversations that we are, we have not worked out as adults. And that's a heavy burden. If we as adults are uncomfortable, then we can guarantee our children are deeply confused and uncomfortable. And so it is, it is our responsibility to be learners. It's our responsibility to come alongside them and say, you may be uncomfortable, I may be uncomfortable, but what we're committed to is one another. What we're committed to is our community. What we're committed to is our collective achievement because when we are winning, we are going to win together. And I believe that we live in a community that wants to see all of our students performing at the 100th percentile. And if we can't do, get everyone, then we're going to do our darndest to make that the goal for every single child. So I appreciate us looking at this information with bravery, and I think that it's going to take our board being brave and being together in order to respond to that. For the, the recommendation about the ACC and TWE school, I, I definitely think that it's something that is, it surprised me as well. It's a big, it's a big institutional shift. So I would like to spend more time like thinking about it and learning about the recommendation. One of the things that I do, I am concerned about is making sure that ACC has the institutional support to be partnered with a program that has, TWE is a mandated program, right? And there's lots of research and institutional investment because it's a mandated program where ACC was adopted and not fully implemented. I would like to see if, if we truly believe that the gaps that we're seeing in achievement for black and brown students is about access and is about opportunity, then we also need to invest in growing that access, and that means institutional support. So I think that that integration in terms of culturally relevant education around language as well as our different heritage, global heritage is essential. I too, as a black woman, understand what it's like to be operating in institutions that weren't necessarily built to welcome me, but knowing that I have the aptitude to be successful. And the toll that that takes on constantly having to navigate and constantly having to prove that you belong. And that, that continues to be a part of my existence even in our amazing city. I wouldn't choose anywhere else to live, but the fact is, these are very real issues in our city, and we need to be confronting them for our children. So I would really like to, I think, dive into these recommendations, and I think that it's important that we not look at them just as ideas, but also look at them in terms of how are we investing as an institution in making these things capable of being successful? Because there's, there are a lot of programs, initiatives, policies that get put into place for name only, and when they're not fully invested in, they, they don't succeed. And then the folks look at them and say, well, see, that's not necessary. It's not necessary. It's failed, so we don't need to do that, without looking at, well, what was the initial investment in, in making that succeed? And so I'm really glad to have this information and I'm eager to continue working on talking about the practicalities of changing the environment and improving the environment for all of our children and for us to walk alongside them and do this hard work with them to make our community better and ultimately impact children's futures.
I just want to make a couple of quick comments because Anya, you touched on a few things that I've been thinking about a lot. The theme of being learners is really why Corey's standing up before us today. And when we, when I engaged Corey a year plus ago and said, help us look, help us put a mirror to our processes, help us understand in a way that has an independent lens but can actually push us to understand what we have before us is, is that mirror, if I may. And so we have to be learners to actually move forward. The other comment, and it goes back to our, our focusing on our summer planning, which will come right after school's out, is how do we make any of the recommendations or anything that we're facing capable of being successful? Thank you for that because we've got a lot of initiatives that go on in the district. We've got some very powerful recommendations, and we want to place the recommendations within a setting where we can deliver on them and we can actually do well and do good for our students and for our staff. And I think that, that, that theme is, these two themes of being learners, not being afraid to dive in, and yet creating action plans as we move forward that are capable not only of success but of tremendous success so that we can really move forward as swiftly as possible. Will be part of our summer planning, will be part of, as we come back to respond to carry on the conversation with the board, is how we'll, we'll come back to respond.
Yeah. One more thing that I forgot to add is I implore us to think about how we can add alignment of our early childhood programs to, to the recommendations as we move forward.
Any other comments or questions on this part of the presentation? Then we can move on, and I think you'll stay up here for this one, the equity policy. Look, we know, we have reviewed the policy a couple of times before, in February at the policy committee meeting, and then again last week at a policy committee meeting. So we are looking here at the results of what we discussed last week, but this is another opportunity for us to take a look and make some comments before we think about adopting the policy.
Sure. But what you have before you is through the process that we've done, draft policy that's been reviewed by the committee for approval.
By the DALT, the District Equity Leadership Team, correct?
Well, by the Policy Committee. The process that we usually do is to brainstorm and engage in, in the discussion and move forward with whatever drafts we have and have the policy committee bring it forward, and that's the stage that we're in. And indeed, the DALT, the District Equity Leadership Team, has also reviewed this as well.
Joey, did you want to? We're in discussion?
Yes, we are in discussion.
So this is just a brief statement about my feelings about the policy, knowing that we're going to discuss certain parts of it, but in general. Stephen Selden wrote in inheriting shame that the history of American eugenics has more often than not been a history of categorization in individuals and groups for the purpose of legitimizing a set of existing social and institutional and political relations. What this policy seeks to do for me is cut the pendulum that swings education by the very chain it hangs on. This policy is more like a stake in the ground that says, here in this town, across the borders of our schoolhouses, we seek to eliminate policies, practices, and barriers that exist in this organization that perpetuate institutional racism and contribute to the opportunity and achievement gaps in our schools. This policy is a single step forward. It seeks to ensure that new staff members know on day one of service in this district that while we look to continue making strides academically for all of our students, we will not shy away from seeking to understand the ways in which we have marginalized students and families of color implicitly or explicitly. We will not shy away from delving into issues of race. We will not shy away from talking about ways in which our school system can combat the impact of economic inequality in our schools. We have seen through research, as recently as just a few weeks ago by Sean Riordan, that our schools have many areas to celebrate in terms of student growth and success. What we need to do is better understand and attack with urgency the ways in which we can close the language gap that students enter our schools with from early childhood and birth, birth to early childhood, lessen the marginalization of students of color in the areas of special education eligibility and exclusionary discipline practices, hire and retain staff and attract staff who come to us with an equity lens in place that will contribute to our path forward, examine the systems that might exist that have contributed to low student growth outcomes, and build a path that demolishes those systems so as not to repeat the mistakes of the past. And to give voice to students and parents of color who do not have the agency and school system to date. This policy is broad and can frustrate some in that way. It does not specifically identify the how, but it does provide broad direction to our educators and leaders of the district, that the time is now to break the cycles that exist in our school system. exist in our school system that are not unique to Evanston but are part of a large issue surrounding race and equity in America. This is not about seeking those who are up to the task, it's about requiring everyone in our institution to be a part of the solution, demanding it through extensive action steps, large and small. This is a single yet important step.
Thank you.
And if you weren't sure, that's me supporting the policy.
Thanks for that clarification. Are there any other comments or questions about the policy?
I have a couple comments/questions.
All right.
And one is because the last, I had not been to the policy meeting last week. I think I actually, in February, had left before we talked about, but I didn't see that version. And one of the things that I was, I appreciated about the February version, so I'm curious as to how it got shifted, was sort of a primacy of the focus or talk about the end goal, and I don't remember the exact words before, but, you know, kind of this clear, clear statement of the commitment to eliminate racial predictability and disproportionality in all aspects of education, which I, it may be embedded in this, but it didn't seem like it had as much primacy as that's the outcome. And I think it's to Joey's earlier comments about, you know, what is our vision for success? What does success look like? To me, that's the end game, that's the end vision, and that we should, you know, include that prominently. Because the, the current version talks more about, I mean, it includes it in the beginning, but I don't, I just doesn't feel like the language was as strong or prominent as it was in the previous version. And that was, then it was one of four bullets, I think, you know, around commitment, but it was earlier on. So I, I guess it was, and I'm not gonna, I don't think we're at the level of parsing the particular language, but I would like to see that more prominently, either in purpose or, you know, some upfront statement of the, of, of the end goal. The second comment was really about if it's, if we've discussed our calling out, at least in this, in the beginning, we talk about discipline, the predictability of achievement attributable to institutional racism, cultural biases, and other societal factors. And I'm just wondering out, as one of those societal factors, knowing it's not the primary predictor, whether it's not worth calling out social and economic disparities. I do believe that the, where our policy, some of our policies, and I guess I'll point to some of the recent discussion around school lunches and shaming around that, because some kids are overdue and the great generosity in our community to, you know, kind of create a fund to pay for those net balances. I think some of the policies that we end, end up having that affect based on race disproportionately do start with socioeconomic issues. And so calling that out helps us look, create a lens or a focus on looking at those policies and practices. So that would be just a thought there in terms of defining that as, as, I assume that it's meant to be one of the societal factors. I don't know what, what is meant by societal factors, but I, I guess I was assuming that that was one of them. I understand why you don't want to create it as a primacy thing and, and, you know, these, but their intersectionality there, and that particular one, I think, does lead to some of the practices that we have that are, are possibly inequitable. And that they fall, ultimately fall oftentimes on race lines. So that was the second comment. The third was more around, you know, I, I'm not sure, it's really a technical piece of responsibilities and versus commitments. So we have the responsibility section, which talks about, you know, some of the responsibilities of the board and then the superintendent. It was interesting to me that while superintendent, while the board has equity training, and then staff later, I guess, if under commitment seemed to also be responsibilities, but it was just directed towards a different audience. So I wonder if it's not, all of those are responsibilities slash commitments, and it's based on, they're different based on the audience. And maybe I'm, I'm not reading it correctly, but one, I would say, we, we should include, if we're requiring board and staff to be trained and superintendent is called out separately, then we should have training there for, you know, some professional development there. And under the commitment section, is that meant to address all District 65, or is it targeted towards those things that staff at large would be affecting, and then maybe as an audience? Because they all do seem to be commitments, to me. I mean, they all seem to just different audiences for the commitment. So that, that was, and then the final question I have is, or comment, is that I, I think that the responsibility or commitments or whatever is the Board of Education, under point two, I think that the separate work to increase outreach to and participation of families that represent the diversity of our students, the, the second clause there ensure that Evanston and Skokie's treasure diversity is not maintained on the backs of Black, Brown, and Latino multiracial students. I would rephrase it to say, is not maintained to the detriment of, or I think the construct of the language does presume some intent or motivation that I'm not sure is there, and that the language, I wasn't sure what it meant, to be honest, and maybe that's just because I'm coming from it, but I, I thought it meant to not be maintained at the detriment of or to the cost of, and that that would be more clear language.
So there's, there's a couple there. Can I respond to a couple of them?
Yeah.
So the last one, I think the language, I understand what you were suggesting by changing the not maintained on the backs of to, to the detriment of. And I think, I think the language is implying, when we talk about institutional racism, not malintent, but implicit development and intention of maintenance of systems. So I think some of that is, is purposeful. And I think it's supposed to create, that language is supposed to create a little tension and discomfort. And that discomfort is what motivates us to, to want to move. The, the economics piece, you know, the, you asked a question about, like, where, where does economic inequality play in here? I mean, I read it as under commitment number five, the resource allocation in an intentional and fiscally responsible manner. And then it lists a whole array of places where we need to economically support. That's, that's the, the softer place of identifying economic inequality in the resolution. And then I saw the out, the outcomes is under Dr. Goran's spot, developing implementation for the policy and reporting annually. And my guess is that the strategic plan would have the metrics embedded within it, not the policy, unless we wanted a policy that lived and breathed much more regularly because the metrics would probably change. I don't know if that's a desire of the board for the policy. I would, I would prefer the policy be a little bit more timeless and have the, the goals or the metrics be embedded in the strategic plan and the reports that way.
Yeah, I don't want to be, I don't want to mistake, I don't, I'm not saying specific goal, but just the, the goal of the policy overall is to eliminate the racial predictability of achievement and that, that we should...
Like the same line that's in the equity statement, right?
Yeah, yeah. That we should start with, or, you know, include that prominently, not that we've, not that we put, you know, exactly what the metrics will be.
Okay.
So that's the point I was trying to make. And Joey, I, I understand the dis, like, tension and creating discomfort in the language. I just, I'm, I, I also know that this is a policy that has to guide lots of stakeholders. And so a shared understanding of what the intent, what it means is important.
Is valuable, yeah, absolutely.
Right? As a policy, it's not a, it's not a statement of our position, it's a statement of, I mean, it's part of its our position, but it's a policy that has to guide not only administrative action, but has to guide our staff. And so I think the language needs to be accessible to all those folks. So that's, that's why I, I'm not sure if that, the particular, the way it's constructed, the words are, are accessible to all folks. Because we're wanting them to act on that, right? And so what does that actually mean? And how can we evaluate what we're, whether we've done it or not? If we've actually created harm, we then have to evaluate, what is the harm we're doing? You know, I think the, I assume the, the embedded piece here is a little bit of what we talked about the last time. Maybe it relates to, one of the areas you would think of is busing. Is there intention, is there harm? And so then you, then you have to talk about what harm has been done. And I think that having that in the policy would be clear to evaluate when it, when something we do is consistent with it or not, that's all.
Yeah. I was reading it with the lens of like Title IX implementation and how some universities implemented Title IX by investing in women's sports, and others invest, and others implemented Title IX by cutting men's sports to create a balance, right? And one was, one was a loss to the institution, one was an investment in the, and I guess it depends on how it's being read and who's implementing it.
Yeah.
But I understand what you're saying. It has to be, has to be accessible.
But if you say don't harm, if you can't harm those, those groups, then you wouldn't be able to, I don't know if you could still do that, but, to be honest.
I agree with Joey's point about, you know, some of the language is going to be uncomfortable, and I think that's okay. I think, you know, if we change that to is not maintained to the detriment of Brown, Black, Latinx, and multiracial children, to me, that is frankly equally uncomfortable. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with changing that if, if people feel that that is clear, because I do think it essentially is the same thing. So I'm okay with, does anybody else have thoughts on that language? Or Cory, did you want to add anything? Was there any, what your thoughts would be on changing it?
No, I mean, however, I think whatever amendments need to be made before it's approved is...
Okay. So I think that will be one, is not maintained to the detriment of, instead of on the backs And then, you know, to the point of, oh, go ahead.
Clarify that, to change it or not change it?
To change it.
Change it.
To change the word so that Evanston and Skokie's treasure diversity is not maintained to the detriment of.
Oh, okay.
Instead of on the backs of. So I, I think that's essentially the same thing. And like I said, I think it, it is still an uncomfortable, uncomfortable proposition. So to the point about the, having the more upfront language, I suppose, you know, so you're suggesting putting in that first, raising the achievement of all students while eliminating the racial predictability of achievement? Because, I mean, to me, it is pretty, in the purpose, it's pretty well-established.
So we're saying twice.
But that it's, so where would you suggest?
Because we don't say, we actually, I mean, we say the racial predictability of achievement is attributable to institutional racism, but we don't say that the, the goal of this policy is to eradicate the racial dis, I mean, unless I'm missing it, we just don't say that. So I just, I feel like that is, that is the goal, right? That is, I don't, I don't think we have to include that first statement, which was the first clause before it, but...
I kind of want there to be a goal section that just has this.
Do we specifically incorporate that into?
The entire equity statement has the...
Well, I mean, okay, the commitment, it says in order to achieve, oh, I mean, I wonder if we can just incorporate the statement into the policy without necessarily having to restate? Because we are going to have, when we have the policy, the statement will be attached to it, correct?
That makes sense, yeah.
I mean, I think that was the intent, right?
Yes.
So...
I mean, my understanding is the policy is, lays the foundation for future procedures, and that will be, that's to be determined. But the policy itself, my understanding was, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not usually up here, but was just, last week at the policy meeting, we looked at the language and changes and made those amendments, and so it would be to adopt it as is. I don't know what procedural, what, in terms of making amendments to this now, what that does to then having to bring it back and then get approval for it, I'm not sure. So I just want to be clear.
I think we can make, you know...
We can agree.
Yeah, we agree on the, so what if we are...
So if, if we just use this as a preamble to the policy or whatever, in, in...
I imagine they would live together. So I think, because the statement was kind of the precursor to the policy, so...
The policy doesn't supplant the statement.
Right. So at least putting them together, that, I think that would be...
Yeah, I think that's, I think we can...
Then we don't have to reword.
And where would we put it in the text?
I think as it is, right?
No, I know, as it is, but where?
Beginning, is the intro.
No, it's a...
In the front?
But I, but I think the...
Oh, I see what you're saying. Does it before the policy?
Right now, it's an attachment, and at least as I listen, because ultimately, policy is your responsibility as the board, and I can help, we can help. But if, I think what Candace, what I think you're suggesting is take the language that's as an addendum here and place it in the policy.
The, the statement is part of the background of the policy, correct? So could we not put the statement in the background section?
I think the statement is though, it's its own standalone, it's just the statement that's adopted. I think it's here just to show where it comes from, that it's aligned and related to. So I don't know that it's a part of the policy.
But they're suggesting they would like it to be.
So I'm saying the, the background section, right, at the, the very beginning.
How about if we, in the second paragraph, if we add, "The purpose of this policy is, comma, in accordance with the racial and educational, the District, Evanston-Skokie School District 65 racial and educational equity statement, comma, to establish a framework for the elimination of bias." So then it incorporates it, and we could still include it at the end so that it's there as a reference.
Yeah.
And then...
That'd be fine.
Okay, so it would, in the second paragraph, "The purpose of this policy..."
The statement and the policy share the first sentence also.
With that?
They're the same first sentence on the statement and the policy.
This is correct.
Like, there's redundancy in there, which I'm fine with, I just...
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember too, that as, as we try to do this, which is hard to do at this hour, but as we try to do this, policies can be organic and we can then come back to the next policy meeting and reflect and adapt and change. So if you want to add, you want to be explicit about the language in the racial statement, racial and educational equity statement, so it's within the language, that's fine. It may be a little redundant, we can clean it up later.
So, "The purpose of this policy is, comma, in accordance with Evanston-Skokie School District 65 racial and educational equity statement." And then the rest of it is...
So we're going to reference it in the beginning?
In the, in the second paragraph. I think that's, to me, the most logical place to reference it. So the third point about socioeconomic being specifically called out, I feel like, as Cory mentioned, there are a lot of ways for, you know, there are a lot of intersecting identities, and certainly socioeconomic is one. I feel like this is pretty, you know, with our, our racial and educational equity statement and with this policy, I do feel like we are, as I think Cory meant, referenced in her presentation, talking about the, the things that, the identities that are assigned by people based on the way they look. So to me, it seems like if we're going to add socioeconomic, then there could be a whole litany of things that we should include, because there are many ways that people have intersecting marginalized identities. So I would be hesitant to include that specifically anywhere. We do have in the statement, you know, the second bullet point does reference family income, disabilities, gender identity, and status as an English language learner. So I think if, I don't know if calling it out, just if we're incorporating this into that, do you think that addresses your concern, or do you still feel like it needs to?
Well, I think incorporating it, then, it does speak to all of those, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
And I would expect to see it, and again, a strategic plan, next steps, there would be motifs of all of these things interwoven.
And we do look, when we're looking at the outcome metrics, we do look on the different categories.
And again, just to reiterate, the second bullet in the equity statement, which is now more formally in accordance with the policy, talks about eliminating the predictability of academic achievement based on family income, disabilities, gender, and status as an English language learner. So it does open that up and provides, provides the superintendent and staff with that directionality that we need to, without, without shying away from race as, and the racial predictability.
And then I don't, were there any other of your comments then?
Just more presentation of it, it's not a big thing, like the responsibilities and commitments.
Oh, right.
And I, I just wonder if we can take that upon advisement and bring that to the next policy committee meeting.
It's a cleanup.
Mr. Policy Chair.
Yes, absolutely. Like I said, this is an organic policy, so again, it could change, you know, we, we can make adjustments, changes, so I'm open to whatever.
Two quick things, I think. A very smart man once said, don't let perfect be the enemy of good. Um, so I think getting this done is going to be incredibly important. Um, and like we all said, it's a living document, so we can make some changes. The one thing that I just wanted to point out is a bit more macro and that's, in the process of doing research on the policy, I encountered, you know, probably a dozen other policies and a dozen other similar communities. And to me, what, and I had an opportunity to speak with someone on the Seattle Public School District Board, and I think what really spoke to me from that experience was that we're not in this alone and that we should, I think, form those connections with other communities and figure out best practices and really how we can solve this, not just for Evanston, but for other places in the country too.
No, and I think that looking into some of the other policies was part of Delt's process in creating this one, but I think that's definitely an excellent point. There, there are opportunities to collaborate with other communities and with our own sister district, so.
I just had a couple of points about language, just wanted to maybe make some of our action words a little stronger, our commitments stronger. So under the commitment section, uh, it says exploration for ways to foster parent and family involvement.
Number four.
Yeah, number four. Um, I think I would maybe suggest that we change that to something more action oriented, like identify, um, or identify and adopt, um, ways to foster parent and family and not just involvement, but engagement. Um, engagement implies more of an exchange and is more relational. And, um, I think that we're really seeking to, um, open up access and develop relationships and exchange. Um, number five.
So.
Um, sorry.
So can we just make sure, did you get the, do we have any?
So would it be identification of ways to foster parent, family, engage?
Engagement. I do like the engagement versus involvement. I think that, I agree, that makes it stronger, that it's two-way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think identification of is fine as well.
Um, and then five, um, I'd like to push beyond just simple access to the curriculum. Um, maybe a commitment to develop and adopt pedagogical practices. So, um, it says here, providing every student with equitable access. Um, so what I'm recommending is, um, let's see, resource allocation in an intentional and fiscally responsible manner by providing every student with, um, actually.
Can I, can I suggest some language? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, for, you're looking at for five, right?
Yes.
And I know you mentioned early childhood, so if we could maybe add at the very end, throughout the educational continuum, District 65, so then we, we're looking at the whole continuum and, and, and there's a consistent experience for the student from the, from the moment they enter our district. So I, I mean, a suggestion there to, to.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree with that. So there's, um, I still have this question about access, but I don't have a fully formed, um, formulation of the sentence in my head, so I don't know if we want to work on that or come back to it.
I wonder if that's something that we can come back to.
Yeah.
Any, would it be in two? Because that, the development of the, you were speaking about.
Right, yeah.
Relevant pedagogy. Is that covered in two, separate from the resources or is that different?
Where. Perhaps. I think I, I would like to spend some more time with that. I still, I'm, I still have, I think, um, it's not sitting, the, the idea of just being able to access is not sitting well with me. I think that there's maybe some stronger language, but I don't have it formulated in my mind and given the hour and the fact that we can still work on this, I'd like to come back to that point. Um, let's see. Um, for number seven, exploration of multiple pathways to success. Um, again, we could maybe use stronger language than exploration, perhaps, identify and elevate are some suggestions that I wrote down, multiple pathways to success.
Identification of, would that work?
Or development of, because that mimics some other language that we have.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. As long as, I think, just something a little more actionable than, than exploring, right? Committing to, committing to an action.
Development of, if that works for you.
That's fine. Identification, development and implementation?
[laughing].
I mean, that's.
I think we want to, well.
I, I hear where you're saying, you know what, again, we, we can talk about this, you know, a, a, a policy to craft it, again, this is, like you're saying, this is organic, so.
Right, but I want to honor Anya's point, which is to change the, the verb is what you're looking at, rather than exploration, which seems ambid, sort of ambiguous. Go and identify it, is what you're saying.
Absolutely.
So identification, at least at this hour, sounds to me like a stronger action than just explore.
Um, I, I would also advocate for elevate or elevation, but, um, I'm, I'm okay with us doing, talking about this more later as well. It's not a, that's not a deal breaker for me. Um, and then number eight, I think it was missing the verb. Um, so we have racial literacy and social identity development.
Foster?
Yeah, perhaps.
Foster?
Foster, racial, yeah.
Nice verb at 10:30.
Sounds good. Um, and the other, the other notes that I have, I think, can, can wait until a later, later discussion.
May, may I, just in the spirit of what you offered earlier, in responsibility number two, and this is a question, would you want to put work to increase outreach to an engagement of rather than participation? This is in.
Oh, in the board responsibilities?
Your point earlier about engagement is a more two-way street, so.
Yes.
Okay.
In short, yes.
All right, is everyone?
I have one other thing now.
Okay.
Sorry, based on what Sergio said. In both of the resource allocations, because there's one for the board and then there's one for, I guess.
Oh, to make it parallel?
Well, I guess you can make it parallel, but I was really thinking of, could we add anything about with particular focus on.
Early childhood.
Early childhood or, um, something to, to emphasize the importance of early childhood, pre-K to three or how?
It's probably worthwhile to say pre-K three, because that's our bailiwick.
Yeah.
And there's a certain point where, I mean, we do have early childhood early, early, but that really, our warrant is in pre-K three. So where would you put that, Candace?
I think it was equitable, so high quality curriculum, other educational resources. I would just say with particular focus on pre-K to third grade at the very end, just add it.
Where are number three?
It would be on.
Three and then five under commitments.
Yeah.
With those, I think we, is everyone clear on all the changes?
We're gonna end it's done.
Feel comfortable to move on to voting then?
Yeah, go ahead and vote now. No, 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 let me, let me make a comment after we're done, if I may.
Okay. So Candace?
Okay, I gotta move. I move that the Board of Education approve the District 65 educational equity policy as amended.
Second?
I'll second.
All right.
Ms. Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Helfer?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes. Lotion carries, six to zero.
Yay. Yay. Let's, yes, go ahead.
So a couple of things. First of all, thank you. Thank you for approving. I think it's, uh, important as we continue this work and continue the work that we've enlisted Cory to do, that we maintain momentum on the work that we have. Second, um, as suggested, let's bring back this policy for the rich discussion at the next policy meeting, when we schedule it. And I think just for a process piece, and in some ways, it's, we, we had a, the board was reorganized and then we had a policy meeting and then we moved forward rather fast. So, um, in some ways, it's remarkable in a positive sense that we, we've approved this and so that's good. I think as we move forward on the development of policy, really leveraging our policy committee and getting all the questions and concerns, we didn't have the time this time, but getting all the questions and concern to committee, so committee can do some of the arm wrestling and the, the wordsmithing if we may, so that when we finally bring something to the board, um, we can, again, always be open to change, but we can move in a, in a fashion that honors the committee work and moves forward. So we'll work on that, Mr. Committee Chair.
Sure will.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Cory. Thank you very much, Cory, for all of your work.
Cory, thank you, Cory.
And leading Delt's work on this, um, it's.
I think it's important to say too, that many of us around this table and Cory and others will be at Beyond Diversity Training tomorrow morning, bright and early.
Bright and early, that's right.
And so, when we look at the commitment and the commitment to carrying this work off, uh, leadership of the district and leaders, who are teacher leaders and staff leaders, colleagues will be working with us as early as tomorrow morning.
Okay, um, we have a couple more discussion items.
I think in light of time, I had the department chairs here.
Okay.
But they, we have decided to reschedule in order to allow them to be on their game tomorrow.
And that's for both of the discussion items for the?
No, that's for curriculum review.
Curriculum review, okay. So we will move that to a later date, um, but we still want to do the ST math update?
Yes.
Okay. So then we will move on to that discussion.
Great, thank you. Um, this is, um, perhaps the definition of a slam dunk. Tonight, I'm bringing forward on behalf of the STEM team and Stacy, uh, the results of a two-year-long partnership and research project in District 65 and our recommendation to expand ST math or spatial temporal math to all District 65 elementary and magnet schools. By my count, this is a win-win-win-win-win. Uh, the program has already been implemented in seven District, District 65 schools and has started to show some promising results, especially for at-risk students. The program is broadly supported by teachers, including the Math Standing Committee, which unanimously voted to support expansion of the program, and the Curriculum Advisory Council, which also unanimously voted to support expansion of the program. Third, the program is recognized nationally, receiving numerous awards and recognition, three of which are mentioned in the memo for you tonight. Fourth, it's completely different from everyday math and therefore provides a different but complimentary avenue for student learning of mathematical concepts. Finally, we've partnered with the Mind Research Institute, which owns the spatial temporal math and has developed it to realize a significant price discount for our district as we expand to full district implementation. Therefore, I'm requesting approval for up to $130,000 to both renew ST math in the current seven schools and also expand ST math to the six additional schools in District 65, Dawes, Dewey, Kingsley, Orrington, Washington and Willard.
Questions?
My first grader would have loved to give this pitch, because he loves ST math.
Great, awesome. Thank you. I didn't mention the very positive response we get from students all over the district, uh, but that's, come hang out in my house, you'll get a positive response.
No, I think it's, um, I've heard only positive things about it. I think particularly the, the focus on, or not having as much of a focus on language, making it more accessible to students who might have more difficulty, um, in that sense is, is a huge bonus. Um, we are just, this is a discussion item, not a decision.
Asking for a decision this evening, so we can meet our end-of-year, um, budget closing procedures and also take advantage of the discount from ST math.
Oh, we have to vote on that today to be able to do that?
I'm requesting that you do so, yes.
Okay.
Is that possible? Um, because are we supposed to talk about items in public twice? Is that required?
Policies, I don't know about.
Yeah, I don't think it's required. I mean, when we adopted the.
Typically not. And we have discussed this in public, but, um, no, it's not required.
We discussed it as a pilot, I believe. Correct.
We discussed, uh, we discussed the pilot and then we also, this time last year, discussed the expansion to the six schools that we could afford to do last year.
Yeah, I don't believe it's like required by code or anything that we look at it twice. It's just been our, our typical practice, but we did do a, a curriculum adoption a couple of weeks ago that we hadn't, um, reviewed previously, so if, are there?
I don't have a concern, I just don't know that we need to vote on it at all. It's not curriculum materials and.
It's the allocation of the dollars, I think, right? That we would allocate, do we, is it a new allocation? It's not currently budgeted?
Yes, it's a change in allocation. We're pulling funds from sources that we have at the end of the school year.
And it's over the amount that, because we have transfers all the time that we approve.
It's $130,000, so it's over.
Okay, okay.
That's right.
So the, so the, actually, the request is a financial request, with all respect, not a curricular request.
Right, okay. I understand.
Can I make a motion that we approve a, um, no greater than $133,000, um, extension and expansion of the ST math program to all the schools in District 65?
I'll second.
Second, okay. Can we take a vote?
Yes.
Ms. Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Mr. Helfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Lotion carries, six, zero.
Great.
Thank you.
And thank you for the process check, that was good.
And then, um, committee reports. We quickly go through, um, community schools, I don't believe there's an update. There hasn't been. Um, Cradle of Career.
Cradle of Career, we continue our work and, and actually, I was, um, we were remiss not to talk about the important partnership we have with Northwestern on Cradle of Career and they've been active partners in that as well.
Yeah, tomorrow I'll be heading to a, um, there is a, um, some folks from various institutions are going to be going to a conference on collective impact that's going to, um, engage folks from across the country who are doing a collective impact work, so we're hoping to take away a couple of, um, you know, ideas, as well as share some of our successes and challenges, uh, as a, as a community trying to implement collective impact work.
Head start, early childhood?
Start is, uh, Park, I know that there was just an advisory committee meeting a couple weeks ago.
Yes, um, so we, we had a conversation about the, you know, playground, um, there was some, uh, conversation also about the, um, Paul was there, so.
So right now, Park is, we've had, um, over the last couple of years, sort of a, a rollercoaster on the financial sustainability of Park and not, not on programming, but just, uh, based on student enrollment. And we're at a, a, a nice spot where we've got, uh, the enrollment has gone up a bit and the out of, uh, district tuition has gone up a bit. In that meeting, I actually, though, basically said, we want to be really careful and diligent not to celebrate this, but to keep going in the marketing of Park and the reaching out to the various communities, uh, because, uh, the way Park will ultimately sustain itself over time is to recruit children from outside of the district, along with our children that are serving inside the district.
Thank you.
Good night.
And then, finance committee coming up, uh, June 5th?
Yes, I don't have any of the agenda items at this time.
Why not?
We were working on that today.
And then also working board committee, uh, working board meeting on the June 5th and our next regular board meeting on June 12th. Um, so. Okay, well, if there is no further business to come before the board, I find this meeting adjourned at 10:42 PM.